Time being seven o'clock, I will call to order the city council meeting for Wednesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty, and the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yep.
Counselor Vincent.
Here.
Dumont.
Here.
Austin.
Here.
Mishu.
Here.
Witham.
Here.
Girding.
Here.
Cameron.
Here.
Parity.
Here.
Chair recognizes Counselor Girding who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the public, for a public hearing is ordinance number three twenty-one to amend chapter twenty-one A, Display of Municipal Firehorses. Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against ordinance number three twenty-one to amend chapter twenty-one A, Display of Municipal Firehorses? Please come forward, state your name, the address that you live at, along with your award if you have that applicable information. Anyone wish to speak in favor or against ordinance number three twenty-one to amend chapter twenty-one A, Display of Municipal Firehorses? None being so, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number three twenty-one that brings us to agenda item number four, which is comments by visitors. The Somersworth City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinion and views at the city council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule seven C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. The speaker shall not enter into any debate with any person, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. This time we welcome comments by visitors. Please come forward, state your name, your address, and the ward you live in if you have that applicable information. Any comments by visitors this evening? Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. Self-adjusting. I'm at Soldati, Seven Prospect Street, Ward One. First, I just want to thank city leadership for getting us to a place in our community where we can meet in public. Having these meetings, it's so important to be able to come here. So thank you for all your work through this. I know it's been a lot of fatigue on Zoom and elsewhere, so we appreciate your leadership as well as the public health officials in our city that have gotten us here. I also just wanted to publicly put up, really for the city of Somersworth, to thank everyone for showing up on Election Day yesterday. We had record turnout in this city, over fifty percent increase over the last primary election. And so Somersworth should feel very proud about those numbers, particularly amidst a pandemic, amidst all that is going on in the world today, knowing that people are willing to show up, willing to cast their vote, willing to have their voice heard. I know all of you appreciate it so much, you want your constituents out and about. We hear people in Concord that are saying that Somersworth is on the map, it's on the map politically, that's so important that they have really turned up. So it was such a wonderful day to see that. I was just really here to speak to one item on the agenda, I'm grateful to be able to do it in front of you. I'm part of a sort of small racial justice group here in Somersworth that over the last several months has just been having conversations, really important conversations about our community to make sure that we are always doing more and doing better to ensure that racial justice and all forms of social justice are really met in our community, the community that we love so much. And of course, that often intersects with conversations around public safety. And as so many of you know and folks in the room today know, Somersworth has very unique challenges when it comes to keeping our community safe, comes to keeping our community healthy, comes to keeping our community well and well-connected to feel like they have a livable future here in Somersworth. And so on the agenda, as you know before you, is a discussion about spending money, in part provided by the Department of Justice, but also spending city money to expand our police department. And I first want to just address, I am so grateful to the efforts of community policing that we have had in years past. I've had the great fortune of working with former community police officers here in the city of Somersworth. We, at my cafe, had record turnout for a Coffee with a Cop event just a couple years ago, and it was so important for my customers, for residents, visitors, to interface with our public safety officials in a way that doesn't feel like they're knocking at their door or at their car window, but just meeting with them one-on-one. So I'm so supportive and grateful for community policing. And I certainly hope all of you recognize that as we think about public safety, the goal really should be to be working with the public and working with the community. And I certainly hope to strengthen our community policing efforts. I do just want to question if right now adding one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from city and taxpayer dollars is appropriate to be expanding our budget, particularly for our police department. I know that the actual mission statement in the mission of our police department is to support the community. And so I just want to ask, as we're having a conversation tonight and asking different officials to weigh in on the topic of public safety, aren't all of our police officers community police officers? Or shouldn't all of our police officers be community police officers and doing community policing? Doing work to make sure that residents, visitors, travelers feel safe, are healthy, are well-connected. And so I'm not sure if during COVID is always the best time to be expanding any one department and adding one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the taxpayer rolls. But I also want to just address, oh, we just got a little bit louder here. I just wanted to add, we do know that there are programs that we can support our communities. One of them is the LEAD program. I think that's such an important program. I haven't yet seen Somersworth take advantage of the LEAD program. And I would hope that they do whether or not we pass and accept the COPS Hiring Grant, but that we look for ways to be working with people struggling with the substance use disorder. As someone that is in long-term recovery myself, working with recovery organizations, we know that programs like the LEAD program really do help make our communities safer. They help make our communities more healthy, and they help make our communities better connected. Staff, about how all police officers do the work of community policing, we look to programs like the LEAD program to make sure that we're not just using grant money, not just using an additional one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to do it, but that we're committed to the principles of keeping our communities healthy and well and safe. So again, I thank all of you, it's good to see all of your faces here. Thank you for all the work that you're doing. Those were just my thoughts for today and look forward to hearing more. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments by visitors this evening? Any further comments by visitors? Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Valerie Sawyer. My address is one sixty-five Blackwater Road. I believe I'm in Ward Two, I'm so much wrong. And my comment is similarly about the COPS community policing program. I, again, thank you all for being here and for your leadership for this time. And again, this is not to belittle or demean the good work that is happening in our police department, but to encourage our counselors to pursue alternative ways of doing public safety. And so whether that is pursuing a different grant that allows us to actually get to the root of the problems that are causing crime in our community, or reassessing the budget in the future to invest further in efforts that help the community, such as education, such as transportation and infrastructure, and believe that those things go further, or may go further in the future with long-term investment in preventing crime. That's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Any further comments by visitors this evening? Any further comments by visitors? None being so, though, move us on to agenda item number five. Chair will obtain a motion in regards to the consent calendar. Counselor Witham.
I move that the consent calendar be approved.
Counselor Witham moves that the consent calendar be adopted as presented seconded by Counselor Austin. The question for the council is on adoption of the consent calendar. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the consent calendar is adopted. Brings us to agenda item number six, which is comments by counselors. Any comments by counselors this evening? Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. In lieu of the two people that came up to speak about the policing and using other grants, so-called, to pursue other avenues. I did have a conversation with Counselor Parity last week, and it is in regards to being a part of the, as a state representative, I'm also a part of the delegation, which is the county. And I don't know if it's that people are not aware, but these programs that some people come to the microphone and talk about, such as drug abuse and these other social programs, are really covered heavily by the county. And the city of Somersworth, like Dover and the cities that are connected to the county, all have that opportunity to move forward to those, for those so-called benefits, or the word I'm looking for is those programs. So, and I can't say enough about Stratford County. They set, they set the stride. They're in front of Rockingham County and all the other counties. They do, they take the lead because they have such a good core of people there, and then they, and they address these issues. So I just, I just don't want, I mean, I understand that these programs are all important, but I wouldn't want to duplicate the efforts, because I do believe now, and I could be wrong, but when our fire goes out and they deal with someone that has a drug issue, or our police go out and they deal with somebody that has a drug issue, they're passing out brochures, and they're informing these people who have issues, mental illness, drug abuse, spousal abuse, all those things. It even gets down to child support, where they used to throw, a lot of other people, a lot of other coun, a lot of other counties do this, but Stratford don't. They used to put the people in jail. That helps nobody, or takes something away from them, like their license. That don't help anybody. So they garnish their wages, and they make them, and they go to work, and it's a, it's a really good program. So I think if, if the people that, that want to look further into society, so to speak, and helping, check out the county level. Ray Bauer, at the county level, he's not the commissioner, but he's under the commissioner, and he runs it, is really, really got it together over there. I can't say enough. So as far as the grant goes, grants are pretty specific. It's not like we can take the police grant, and I could be wrong again, but it's not like we can take the police grant and just say, okay, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and use it for something else. It's pretty specific for what has to happen. And I think that we're covering it. And I am an advocate of another police officer, because I've been in this city for years, working the streets, right beside the police department, at the fire department, and there's not enough of them. If we put all the crime in the fosters, because it doesn't go there, no one would want to live here.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Further comments by counselors? Counselor Parity.
Yes, thank you. Just hang on, can you hear me? I wanted to thank Counselor Vincent for having that talk with me last week or a couple weeks ago about the county. And I'll sort of reserve comments on specifically to the COPS Hiring Grant for that portion of the agenda, but I did just want to say the county programs are really, really great. Most of them, if not all of them, that I reviewed after speaking, hearing from Ray Bauer, are all post-arrest programs. So they're really great at rehabilitating people and getting people out of situations once they've been arrested. I think something that's really unique about the LEAD program is that it's a pre-arrest program, and it's something that the city can step up and, and do from our level. So I think there's a lot of different approaches that we can use to lower what the grant refers to as a pretty high call rate for our per capita residents here. And I certainly, you know, thank, thank the residents here for coming up and sharing their feelings. And I just wanted to say that the county, can y'all hear me? Yeah, the county programs are great. I think that they are more addressing issues once they have come up with criminal justice. So I'm not sure that we need to choose between addressing problems after they happen and doing what we can beforehand. The LEAD program in particular doesn't cost the city anything. It's a program that we can opt to participate in, and similar to, you know, the ACERT program, which, which is already the intent of the city to participate with our county counterparts. It doesn't take any city funding, so it's not redirecting this grant money towards that.
Counselor, if I can have you hold your thought for a sec, just to kind of guide everyone. The mics in front of you are for at home. So, so these, these are camera mics that are being broadcasted on twenty-two, which means you really need to use your, as I would guide my middle school students, reverse saying inside voices, this is really when you use your outside voices inside. So I need you to really try it. I know you're in masks, first meeting, we're all back together, different location, you're used to the microphones that amplify. You gotta dig deep, get those voices out so everyone can hear you, because I don't want, I don't want what each one of you are trying to say to be lost with everyone. It's important that each one of you are heard, and important that what you are saying is heard.
Okay, great. You sounded amplified. You, you just project really well.
This mask is holding me back.
Kenny's loud.
Should I, should I reiterate, or did, did, is that audible? Okay. Did the clerk get the notes? Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Further comments by counselors? Any further comments by counselors? None being so, though, move us on to agenda item number seven, which is communications. We do have a communication which came in, which was an email. I will have that read as the public adjusts that we are going back to live sessions. Obviously, is that this email came in thinking that we were still under the Zoom, so we will have this email read on the communications. Chair recognizes the clerk.
Correspondence is from Maggie Robert, trustee of the Forest Glade Cemetery. As Mr. Witham always laughs when I say the Forest Glade Cemetery is alive and doing great, we have missed our Sundays at the Ferber Chapel and all the folks who joined us over the years. We look forward to the next summer and the Sundays at the chapel returning May as an outside event on the cemetery grounds. We are very pleased with the folks who spend time walking in the cemetery. I've told, I've been told that if you do the whole loop, it might be considered a five K. Update on the chapel, as you may remember, we have been awarded a LCHIP grant for the restoration of the slate roof. The bids came in, and now the vetting process begins. We are happy that at tonight's meeting, you will all give a big yes to Mark Richardson joining our trustees. As some of you may know, Mark has served our city in other volunteer areas. Mark brings his love of history to our board, and we look forward to him becoming an active part of our team as we continue our work to make Forest Glade Cemetery a gem in the city's landscape. The seed of the soul is to serve.
Thank you, Mrs. Robert, for that email. It is one full lap from the Ferber Chapel is a mile. So one full lap is a mile. I know that because that's one of my walking routes. Moving on to agenda item number eight, which is presentations and petitions. There are none to present this evening. Moving on to agenda item number nine, which is the mayor's report. Honorable members of the council, I submit to you the mayor's report for Wednesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty. As a former social studies teacher, one of my favorite classes to teach was the elective I brought forward to Somersworth High School entitled Race and Ethnic Relations. The class was modeled after coursework I successfully completed in college while on my teacher's license. The main objective was to have each student understand the history of global intolerance and to have them to start deprogramming some misconceptions, misunderstandings, or stereotypes they had already learned throughout their childhood. While we continue to navigate a tense political and sociological time within our nation, a time when reaching norms of civility has almost vanished from public discourse, academics, sociologists, public servants, and yes, politicians, can all agree on one concept: Hate and intolerance is learned behavior. We are born pure and unvanished by the lenses of a society that still believes that the classification and unequal treatment of its fellow brethren and citizens is justified. Yet, with each year since our independence, we have forged through our growing pains to create a more perfect union, a union where all will be treated equally and given the opportunity to succeed and celebrate life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, which define our American society. To point out flaws within our system is not unpatriotic. It is not a treasonous act. Instead, it is reminding us that if we are ever to reach the goal, the goal of America becoming the America we so proudly announce to the world that we are, then we must hold true to the work, to this work painstakingly, towards the values which define us as a nation and as a people. The last three weeks since the RNC have certainly been interesting in the mayor's office, and have once again reminded me of how far we have to go to hold to our promise. But this teacher, this principal, this mayor, will not give up on the creed that I studied, taught, and believe in. The founding of our nation is an experiment, a concept. It is a goal. All three, I believe, will come to fruition, and the ideals we outline, we will eventually reach. It will not be without growing pains. It will not come without a cost of discomfort, and to some, challenges to others. However, as a nation, we must succeed. Otherwise, the darkness of dictatorship, the darkness of injustice, the darkness of equal, of inequality, and global persecution will return. I am, I continue to govern and live my life and live in the land of being idealistic, but those beliefs mirror the thoughts that our nation dared to create a system where factory workers would have the same vote and voice as the owners, where age, sex, race, national origin, sexual orientation, religion, would not be a disclaimer for one to claim a right. For two hundred and forty-four years, we have been working towards crafting this more perfect union. The voices, the banners, the signs, the rallies, and yes, the flags you have seen today, I, over the past several weeks and months, are not an attack on America. They are a reminder, we are not there yet, and that the people still love and believe in this nation and are will, and are unwilling to give up on her. The question I ask each person tonight, are you willing to do the same? Do you still believe in the hope and promise of America? Or are we misleading ourselves into thinking it's a myth? I don't believe so, and I hope you join me in doing the same. As you are aware, my love for kids' books and the universal message they teach continue to be utilized within my role as an educator and, yes, political leader. In some cases, it's become my stick. One could say it's a Hilliard trademark. Tonight, I share with you a book entitled Anti-Racist by Ira M. Kinney. Anti-Racist Baby. Anti-rac, Anti-Racist Baby is bred, not born. Anti-rac, Anti-Racist Baby is raised to make society transform. Babies are taught to be racist or anti-racist. There is no neutrality. Take these nine steps to make equality a reality. One, open your eyes to all skin colors. Anti-Racist Baby learns all the colors, not because race is true. If you claim to be colorblind, you deny what's right in front of you. Two, use your words and talk about race. No one will see racism if we only stay silent. If we don't name racism, it won't stop being so violent. Three, point at policies as problems, not people. Some people get more while others get less, because policies don't always grant equal access. Four, shout. There is nothing wrong with people. Even though all races are not treated the same, we are all humans. Anti-Racist Baby can proclaim. Five, celebrate all differences. Anti-Racist Baby doesn't see certain groups as better or worse. Anti-Racist Baby loves a world that is truly diverse. Six, knock down the stacks of cultural blocks. Anti-Racist Baby appreciates how groups speak, dance, and create as they choose. Anti-Racist Baby welcomes all groups, voicing their unique views. Seven, confess when being a racist. Nothing disrupts racists more than when we confess the racist ideas that we sometimes express. Eight, grow to be an anti-racist. Anti-Racist Baby is always learning, changing, and growing. Anti-Racist Baby stays curious about all people and isn't all-knowing. Nine, believe we shall overcome racism. Anti-Racist Baby is filled with the power of transcend, my friend, and doesn't judge a book by its cover, but reads until the end. Whether we are five, fifty-five, or a hundred and five, learning and understanding never stops. Let us continue our commitment to openness, tolerance, and understanding, and continue the path started two hundred and forty-four years ago to construct a more perfect union. With the opening of City Hall, the mayor's office will return to regular scheduled hours that started this evening. Office hours will be held Monday, five to six, Wednesday, five to six, and Friday, four to five. Anyone attending office hours is required to wear a mask until further notice. All office hour meetings will be held in the council chambers following CDC safety protocols, including safe distancing. The mayor's office will also be bringing back our monthly community forums. Stay tuned for announcements regarding its new launch soon. As this body continues to navigate the new norms in the unforeseen forecast, we will try to bring back some previously scheduled meetings that were placed on hold. Working with the city manager, I will be exploring a date for our goal-setting session as a council, the team building that was planned, that was placed on hold due to COVID, and our joint goal session that is usually occurs with the school board. While these will be occurring later than normally planned, it is still applicable and will benefit our work and our ability to continue to govern as a model for other communities. Under nomination appointments and elections, under nomination appointments and elections, in accordance with Council Rule seventeen, appointments, the following are being propped forward this evening for a confirmation vote. Mark Richardson for appointment to the board as cemetery trustees with a term to expire in August two thousand and twenty-five. And this respectfully concludes my Wednesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty mayor's report. Brings us to agenda item number ten, which is reports of standing committees. We will start with the chair of the Finance Committee, Counselor Witham.
No report this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Move us on to Government Operations Chair, Counselor Mishu.
No report this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Economic Development, Counselor Dumont.
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Public Safety, Counselor Peppin.
No report this evening, ma'am.
Thank you, Counselor. Brings us to Public Works in the Environment Chair, Counselor Witham.
Keep the trend going, no report.
All right, let's see if the trend is broken by Chair of the Recreation Committee, Counselor Cameron.
No, no report.
Trifecta. Could have used all of this in that last Bruins game, and they would still be in the finals. Brings us to the next agenda item, which is, oh, which is Reports of Special Committees, agenda item number eleven, a reports of special committees. Now the trend will be broken. Counselor Peppin.
Yes, I do have a couple of them. The first one would be the Coast Bus Meeting on August sec, twenty-second, twenty-six, excuse me. And basically, our meeting is basically around the budget for next year's budget. We're trying to propose it for next year. Hopefully, next, the next meeting this month here will be adopting the budget to propose for the next fiscal year. We have a shortfall of four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars that is going to be from, from all the new increases and loss of revenue that we've had and stuff like that. So that's one thing that we're going to try to make up somehow, some way. It's either going to be through the city's request grants that we hand out to the cities, or we're still looking for some type of federal aid or whatever, but it doesn't look too good. A lot of those aids are starting to dry up. Our ridership has dropped fifty-two percent from what it was last year because of the virus, so we're shortfall that way as far as being taken inside. We're having, since we've rerouted the routes around, we're having a little bit of problems with Route One, which is the Somersworth route, a little bit not quite being on time. We're trying to work out those bugs out of that, and a lot of it's got to do with the timing of the lights. So hopefully, they wanted to work with the city and try to see if there's some way when we go through this grant that they can have, work together to see if they can boost that up a little bit so we could save a little bit of time on that. So, so that would be my first meeting. We also had two joint building committees for the Maplewood School and Middle School since the last council meeting. One was on August nineteenth, and one now was this morning, September ninth. Basically, we're almost at the end of the project, and we're trying to spend down the contingency funds right now. The middle school is pretty much done as far as the elevator, outside of waiting for the elevator, which the elevators, hopefully will be here sometime in the middle of October. We're not quite sure. They haven't manufactured all the parts yet. They won't know, we won't know till they start. They won't know, we won't know till they start, till they ship them out with exactly what the date is. The old elevator will be staying in operation till the new one is inside. So that should be an easy conversion because that's not going to be construction inside the building. Basically, the construction inside the middle school is complete. As far as Maplewood, they're still working on the music room. It's not quite finished up yet, just yet. The library, they got all new bookshelves in it, seating and stuff. The carpets have been all replaced inside the middle school right now. If anybody has a chance to go take a walk through, especially the library, there's something else to take a look at. I mean, it's beautiful. And hopefully, they should be out of there within another couple of weeks. So everything's coming together. Today, we did approve, we do have one classroom and the nurses station that we're having a little bit of ventilation problems, so we did approve having an air conditioning unit put in for those two classrooms. The one classroom that we're having a problem with is since they changed and put the addition onto the facility, we had to close some of the windows in one of the classrooms because of the fire rating, so they can't open any of the windows. So that classroom and also the nurses station, we approved putting an air conditioning unit into that for about fourteen thousand dollars. There's also some surface work in the main hallway. The principal would like to have that redone a little bit. I guess when, years ago, it used to be the main entrance. Now it's inside the building because we've added two more additions onto the school since that's been there. The kids have been throwing papers up, and we approved another eight thousand dollars for that. And this is all money coming out of the contingency. The first one came out of the construction management contingency, and the second one's coming out of the contingency that we have a construction out of ours. And also in the middle school, we're also installing an air conditioning unit into the IT room. When we put the elevator in, they made another room to put all the IT equipment into it, and that gives off a lot of heat, and we're worried about it failing, so there's going to be an air conditioning unit also put into that. That's another fourteen thousand dollars. So that's the end of my reports.
Thank you, Counselor. Further reports of special committees? Any further reports of special committees? None being so, City Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Under Old Business, there's only one item to perhaps point out that's new since the last council meeting, and that's in regards to Resolution Two Twenty-One, the COPS Hiring Grant Program. And as you saw in your packet, Counsel Parity had submitted a proposed amendment for your consideration, and she also requested a city attorney opinion, which was provided in your meeting packet. So you do have a redlined version if you want to move forward with that particular amendment. Under New Business, there's two new resolutions, eleven twenty-one and twelve twenty-one. Both of them are related to the wastewater treatment facility upgrade project. Under eleven twenty-one, you actually have copies of the proposed change order and a little bit more detailed explanation of the work being proposed in regards to the water main from our consultant engineer's right here. So hopefully, you were able to follow that along, the memorandum that outlined it. Twelve twenty-one is being proposed to allow authorization to assist in facilitating the approval of any future needed change orders so that construction delays might be avoided should other change orders be required to be approved. The money is available that's in the resolution, and as you are well aware, work stoppages to seek approvals at the council level could lead to extra weeks of delay, which might interfere with construction timelines and associated additional costs because of those delays. In regards to the one-year extension for the seventy-nine E, the Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program, Eight Government Way, Some Downtown LLC, I did provide you a copy of the explanation in regards to the request for an extension from David Baker. He is here this evening. Mr. Baker, hello? And should you have any questions? A few quick informational items. The City Hall and libraries, the mayor mentioned, is open, not only City Hall but also the library. But we do encourage, I do encourage the general public to continue to utilize other means of receiving city services such as online, these things keep fogging up, sorry, online services, through the mail, a drive-through window. So we still encourage the public to continue that to minimize any expanded crowding of City Hall. And we have a new drop-off box, again, across from the post office, if you need to drop off utility payments and that sort of thing, so you don't have to wait in the drive-through line or wait inside to be waited on by a clerk. New Hampshire DES Brown Fields Program Cleanup Grant, based on recommendations from various counselors, including members of the Economic Development Committee, I move forward with city staff and also assistance from SRPC, the Plan Commission Staff, to complete a revolving loan fund grant application to look towards cleanup of the police station. As everybody may recall, we do have some cleanup involving the police station. That has been one impediment in trying to market the station. A couple of people who have had proposal have backed away from it because of those projected costs and the uncertainty of the cleanup, if you will, to some degree. So I did move forward with an application for a grant in thinking that if it's a clean product that we're trying to market, then we may have a little bit more success in trying to get that back on the tax rolls with some sort of mixed juice proposal. And last but not least, Primex Prime Recertification. You've heard this probably every year, and I thanks all of our department heads and particularly Human Resource Manager Linda Carvu on our efforts to continue to participate in that program. As you saw, it allows us, through the certification program, to receive a two-and-a-half percent discount on our workers' compensation, and we'll also be moving forward with the same program for certification for our property and liability insurance. So I want to thank staff on moving forward with those sort of things. It involves trainings and policy reviews and those sorts of things, and we provided you with some of the basic information in regards to how that works in your packet. That's all I have this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is Nomination Appointments and Elections. Under Nomination Appointments and Elections, in accordance with Council Rule Seventeen Appointments, the following is being brought forward this evening for a confirmation vote. Mark Richardson for appointment to the Board of Cemetery Trustees with a term to expire in August 2025. What are the wishes of the council? Counsel Dumont.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to move that we approve Mark Richardson for this appointment.
Counsel Dumont moves that the nominee be so far as confirmed, seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. None being so, the question before the council is on the confirmation of the nominee. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, nope. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and the nominee is so far as confirmed. Brings us to Agenda Item Number Thirteen, which is items which have been laid upon the table. Does anyone wish to remove an item from the table? None being so, move on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, which is Unfinished Business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Ordinance Number Twenty-three Twenty.
Ordinance Twenty-three Twenty, to amend Chapter Four Personnel Rules, Regulations, Section eleven, point three, point one, Health and Dental Insurance Regarding Spouses Employed By the City.
Ordinance Number Twenty-three Twenty has been read a first and second time. Is open to further amendment. Are we still within committee?
Yes.
We have not reported out. Okay.
Ordinance Three Twenty-One is ready to come off the table if somebody is inclined to revisit that.
Yeah, I was slow on the uptake. If we can go back to lay on the table.
I can go back, yep, I can go right back to that. Okay, Ordinance Number Twenty-three Twenty is not ready to be reported out?
No.
Okay, without objection, I will move back to items that have been laid upon the table. Without objection, Counsel Wytham.
I move that Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One be removed from the table.
Counsel Wytham moves that Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One be so far as removed from the table. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Dumont. The question before the council is on removing Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One from the table. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nope. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One is removed from the table. Chair will obtain a motion on Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One. Counsel Wytham.
I move for its adoption as amended.
Counsel Wytham moves the adoption of Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One as amended, seconded by Counsel Dumont. None being so, the question before the council is on the adoption of Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One. If you are in favor of the adoption of Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One, you will state by saying yes. If you oppose, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the rules.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Clarification, please. I don't have, I can't get onto my paperwork, and I don't know what Twenty-three Twenty is.
It's a fireworks.
It's a fireworks.
I need to remove myself from that. I thought that's what it was.
Yep.
But I'm not being able to hook up on the internet here, so I'm kind of left in the dark here. I appreciate that. I was going to ask earlier.
Counselor Vincent will be recused. Clerk, continue to call the rule.
Counselor. Counsel Dumont.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Mishu.
Yes.
Wytham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Parity.
Yes.
Ordinance Number Three Twenty-One is adopted. Back under unfinished business, Ordinance Number Five Twenty-One, is that ready to be reported out? Ordinance Number Five Twenty-One is not ready to be reported out and is still within committee. Moves us on to still unfinished business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution Two Twenty-One.
Resolution Two Twenty-One, to authorize the city manager to enter into a grant agreement with the United States Department of Justice COPS Hiring Program to add one additional police officer.
Resolution Two Twenty-One has been read a first and second time. Is open to further amendment. Counsel Parity.
Yes, I would like to propose the amendment as proposed in the packet here. Should I read it out?
You don't have to take it out because it is within the packet. Counsel Parity moves the amendment, which has been redlined and offered into the city packet this evening. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Girding. Discussion on the amendment. Counsel Parity.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to review this amendment. I thank the city manager for getting the attorney's opinion here. I'll read out the amendment here just for folks watching from home. Added to this resolution, which is to accept this hiring grant, it reads, whereas it is anticipated that the grant position would be assigned to the Patrol Division of the Police Department. In addition to patrol duties, this officer would be assigned as a community policing officer overseeing new programs such as National Night Out, Pizza with the Police, Coffee with the Cop, and a new program known as ACERT, and would explore the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Lead Program to discover whether Somersworth Police Department should participate in this program, which has been shown nationally to reduce rearrest by fifty-eight percent and which allows police officers to exercise discretionary authority at point of contact to divert individuals into a community-based harm reduction intervention for law violations driven by unmet behavioral health needs. So this amendment was proposed after a few discussions that I had within the Public Safety Committee meeting, as well as reviewing the grant application itself. The first half, just noting that it's going to be part of our Patrol Division and that it would oversee, it says new programs such as National Night Out, Pizza with the Police, Coffee with the Cop. These are existing programs that we've been running for some time. The ACERT program is the final one mentioned there. Adverse Childhood Experiences Response Team, I believe, is the acronym there. That, to my knowledge, is not something that we're currently participating in, but this new officer would be assigned to that. The second half, the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion, the Lead Program, was something that I talked about in the last meeting, just thinking this is something that we could maybe add to the plate of this new community policing officer so that they could explore whether or not the Somersworth Police Department wanted to participate. The city attorney did weigh in that since that particular program wasn't mentioned in the grant itself, it might cause some sort of a conflict since it wasn't mentioned in the program. I wish I had remembered to ask that he attend or that I could have followed up with the question. I would disagree with that opinion, of course. It wasn't mentioned within the grant that this officer would be, for example, doing traffic stops, but I don't think that the officer performing his regular duties would exclude us from getting this grant. So I think specifying this in the resolution where we are simply authorizing the city manager to enter into this grant agreement is just saying that we think that this is a program we should at least explore and leave it up to the chief whether or not this is something that we wanted to implement. So whether or not we accept this entire amendment or maybe even just the first half, which comes directly from the chief's memo that this, that this, sorry, this officer would be assigned to as the duties there, I just wanted to explain that amendment, and I'm happy to hear my fellow counselors' thoughts on that.
Question before the council is on the adoption of the amendment to Resolution Two Twenty-One. Further discussion. Counsel Cameron.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Counsel Parity, these are just suggestions, not saying that the police chief has to follow these programs? It's just a recommendation that you look into these? Is that correct?
For the Lead Assistant Diversion Program, yeah, it's just to explore that program. The previous mentioned, everything before ACERT, semicolon, are all things that were included in the chief's memo that is his intent that this officer will be assigned to.
Thank you.
Question for the council is on the adoption of the amendment to Resolution Two Twenty-One. Further discussion. Counsel Wytham.
Not sure where to begin my remarks, but I'll begin with a bit of history, and I think most of you know my dad was a police officer for twenty-something years here in the city, and I think he served at a time before the term "community policing" was used. But I'll go out on a limb and say my dad was probably one of the best community police officers this department has ever had. It was just his approach. It didn't require special training. It didn't require a resolution. It was sort of how he was wired and how he did his job. And I would hope that that serves as a model today, when the Somersworth Police Department hires police officers, that they look for folks with that attribute and that quality, and that community policing is part of the fabric of the organization. Even prior to the suggested amendments that Counsel Parity has brought forward, I was a little taken back, and I believe I asked at a meeting somewhere along the way, why we even need to specify in the grant what this police officer would do. I find that to be limiting in some way, and that the agency needs to have police officers and that the agency needs to be able to adapt to whatever the current climate is, the culture is, the situation is in the community. And that might require more of some of these early intervention strategies that are outlined here, or it may require more boots on the ground for responding to motor vehicle accidents and robberies and those sorts of things. So I think, as I think about this, flexibility is the key. So again, I think that the grant requiring us to sort of articulate how we would use this officer today might change tomorrow. So there's already some flaws with the existing system. But that being said, and thank you, Your Honor, for mentioning the goal-setting sessions that we need to get back to. We typically have those in the spring, sort of teeing up the budget season, and we didn't have it this year, thank you, COVID-nineteen. But one of the things that emerged in our goal-setting sessions years ago, five years ago, maybe even ten years ago, I've been doing this a while now, has been this desire to add police officers. I don't know as though a goal-setting session hasn't brought that up. I know Counsel Mishu has long pounded on that drum at the goal-setting sessions, as have others. And we finally had an opportunity with this grant, and I think the council endorsed the chief applying for the grant. If I'm not mistaken, we applied for two officers. We sought two officers through the grant, and we were notified some time ago that we were awarded the monies for one officer. So it seemed to be sort of a slam dunk. It's been on our radar screen for a long time. It's needed just to respond to call volume, and we want to head in that direction. But it was at that time I said, well, this is odd that we have to have these sort of limiting parameters in here, and I asked the chief if we would be subject to audit, and the answer was yes, we could be subject to audit to make sure that we're fulfilling sort of the particulars of the grant. I don't know how we measure that. I don't know how we monitor that. I'd leave that up to the chief and the city administration to do that. What I do know is we need a police officer just for call volume. What I do know is that this agency, maybe following in my dad's footsteps, preaches, practices, community- practices, community policing. Yeah, there are some particulars outlined in here like coffee with a cop and those sorts of things, but it, it really is more than that. It's kind of who you are as an officer and who you are as an agency. Those are mere examples, if you will. So I'm in support of the resolution, uh, seeking the, the grant regardless of where the amendment goes. Uh, I will say that there is a need for these other enhanced social service uh, uh, programs in advance of the arrest. I said it often, when the mayor put me on the, the city's drug task force, boy, some years ago, there was so much discussion about treatment for folks with dependencies, so much discussion then about treatment of folks with mental illness, and there certainly was not nearly enough discussion about programs and services on, on the front end. And I likened it back then and I'll liken it now that we're very good about buying more ambulances and jaws of life because there's car accidents on the road instead of fixing the damn road. So I agree, we need to fix the damn road, right? But the car accidents are still happening, so I guess we need services there too. We, we need services in both places. So I support that. I think the city has the money to help with that. I don't think we should take it away from this. And I know that's not the intent of the resolution. The intent is just to be thinking broader. I can tell you, as a counselor, I'm thinking broader and I would support those efforts, but I don't want to derail this particular effort at this point in time. Sorry for being long-winded, but that's sort of my thoughts.
Question for the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution two twenty-one. Further discussion, Counsel Peppin.
Yes, thank you. I, I guess my comment is, is that the chief came in front of the public safety meeting way beforehand to, to give us the information. Mayor, you asked us as a public safety committee to review all the, the police department and their functions and stuff like that and what they needed. One of our recommendations is that he needed more police officers. And, and the chief went through a lot of detail of today, a lot of it's done in reports, why they're doing reports and out, out on the road, uh, even though they're doing a lot of it out on the road and their computers on their cars and stuff, still, still monitoring and stuff like that. But, you know, we discussed the needs of what the city needed at that time and not that the lead is not probably needed in the community. Uh, it's probably a great program and stuff like that. I just don't want to just disable this program by some technical thing, by feds coming back and saying, we've got to haul this money back because, uh, because of this technic athlete. And, and basically this is the way I feel about the lawyer's opinion on it. I just think it ought to be aired out a little bit more ahead of time. And as we, we passed one resolution, the council did pass it to go after these people. We've kind of like had all the information that we wanted to throw out there that we got. Now we set the resolution to accept it. Now we want to change it again. And I, I just think that, um, I, I won't be voting for the resolution change, uh, but that, and those are the reasons. Not because that I don't think lead's a good program. I just think that our police officers need a lot more support in other areas and I think the chief needs the freedom to go where he needs to go with, what he thinks he needs in the community. He knows the pulse of the city. And also, just so I can give a comment about our police officers, they probably do most of that already. Our police officers do a lot of social working out there, let me tell you, because they go to these places two or three times a week. They know these people. They know how to disas- escalate a lot of the, the things that they even come up with. So I've seen it beforehand when I was on the fire department, working with them and whatever, Kenny has seen it also. They know that, they have the pulse of the, of the city. We're not a large, large community. Mostly everybody knows everybody and it doesn't take long for the police officers to know everybody in our community. So, um, those are the reasons why. But I, I just hope that we could bring it out in committee well before what we need in our, our community, which I think the chief does an excellent job of explaining and I thought we were all on board on this at the beginning of it. And to change it now, I ju- I just don't want to upset the apple cart and lose it. So that's all I get to say. Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution two twenty-one. Further discussion, Counsel Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I can't agree with you more, Counsel Peppin. And let me just, uh, put it, I guess I put it like this. The chief over there had took over two, three years ago, whatever it may be, and I'm not taking away from anything from past management, but the station, the department has changed three hundred, it's gone three hundred and sixty degrees. I'm not on the inside of those walls, but I know what happens on the outside. And I know that serving with the, the chief on the drug task force al- also and the compassion that he has, if he comes to us and says, hey, you know what, we need to have another police officer, I am going to give him that. The things that have changed at the police department is phenomenal. Everything from now we have a vehicle for investigations, all our vehicles have been improved, like you said, uh, Counsel Peppin. Now they have the, the ability to do their reports in the vehicles instead of coming back to the station. Because one call can create hours worth of reports. It's just, it's phenomenal. It's coffee with the cops. And I actually talked to some of the people, uh, on the street that said, oh my God, you know what the police department did the other day? They went to a call and they defused the situation. They went back and visited to see if everything was fine. That's the change. So if the police chief asks me for another, uh, body, which I can't agree with him more because we've been so short-changed, uh, in this city, I'm going to give it to him because he's done such a phenomenal job. He really has. And that's why I'm going to have to agree with you, Counsel Peppin, that I really don't want to change anything here. I want to go on and I want to get a police officer. However, I don't want to put on the back burner that these other social, uh, issues don't need to be addressed because I think they do. I just think it's going to be, it needs to be addressed on another level. And I don't think we should play with the police department. Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution two dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Counsel Girding, Austin, and then Dumont. Counsel Girding.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, yeah, I'd also like to just comment on specifically why I am in support of this amendment that we're adding. I think, at least in terms of the first piece, if it is just specifically outlining what the grant is for, I see no issue in providing further transparency to the public about with, like, within this resolution specifically as to what the intent of this officer is for, for our community. And I think at the very least, I would hope to see that that portion gets added. Second portion, we all tonight have been discussing how we are in support of something like this. And I think that the second piece at least provides us the opportunity to make that public and state that we are in fact a fan of looking deeper into the lead program. Again, in terms of the actual specific hiring grant, I'll talk more about the ACERT program and all those things as we get to that portion of, of this resolution. But in terms of the amendment itself, I think that there's, in my mind specifically, there's no harm in providing further clarity to the public about what this COPS grant is specifically going to do, why we have it, what the reasoning behind it is, and also what our intentions are moving forward. Certainly, if it is something that could potentially harm it, uh, I am also open to the first portion as well, just having that. Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution two dash twenty-one. Further discussion, Counsel Dumont and then Counsel, Counselor Austin and then Counsel Dumont. Counsel Austin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I certainly agree with the intent of this amendment. I think there's plenty of opportunity for discussion about how we use our community resources, not just the police department, but all of our community resources. You know, we have never talked about telling the fire chief how to use his personnel. We've never talked about, uh, telling the public works director how to use his personnel. And so I'm a little bit concerned that we would put in a resolution wording that would try to dictate to the police chief how to use his personnel. That bothers me a little bit. That being said, I think that I agree with the notion of transparency, uh, that, that we need to make sure that, you know, the public understands how we're spending their money and what it's being used for. I get that. But let's face it, back in January, who in the world would have ever known that we're going to be a global pandemic this year? And how much has that changed things in the last six months? And to include in a resolution a specific set of duties for a specific person when you have no idea what's coming down the road, uh, and that would be a really limiting process for the police chief, uh, I'm, I'm a little concerned with including that wording here. So, uh, I support the resolution, but I will not support the amendment.
Question for the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution two twenty-one. Further discussion, Counsel Dumont.
Thank you, Your Honor. And just to digress a little bit, Counsel Witham, I, it was nice to hear him mention his dad. I had a, an existing police officer talk to me the other day and he said when he first was introduced to the staff at the police department on the first day, two people, policemen, he seen who was introduced to was Roger Witham and Pat Boyle. And he said he never forgets that introduction. And there's reasons, because there's a lot of history there. Speaking of history, I, I looked at the amendment and I just, you know, reinventing the wheel to me is, it's, it's a process. I understand that. But there's so much going on that our police department, to really understand them is to understand Summersworth. Unfortunately, some of us have had the opportunity to work with them to help clean up a neighborhood or two. Not that we went out there with billy clubs or things like that. There were certainly home situations that weren't that, that we would want to accept in anybody's neighborhood. In all my interaction with the Summersworth Police Department during that process, which wasn't that long ago, was nothing but, um, general courtesy, respect. I never seen a police officer get out of hand or raise his voice. I've seen people antagonize him and try to provoke them. And yet they got the job done. The, this amendment identifies many projects under different acronyms. We live in an acronym world, but the reality is Eisenhower Grant, I believe was nineteen ninety-eight, was applied for and granted to the Summersworth Housing Authority. And in that grant, we took our residents and helped them in any way they could, to the point whereby after-school meals were provided, the children of the housing authority, parents were helped with training in small things like preparing food from the food pantries. And so while that's going on, in the interim, the results were quite evident. Matter of fact, in its third year, one of the seniors at Summersworth High School who was a resident of the Summersworth Housing Authority graduated number one in her class because they had after-school study programs. With the adults, uh, there's a wonderful organization, Community Partners. They offer services that a lot of us just don't think of every day. Behavioral problems within the home. How about the oldest child is raising the younger child's because the parents are addicted and, and things like that. A lot of people don't know about that because it doesn't get talked about. The grandparents raising children program, that's in Dover. I never thought about it until I became one of those and participated in the weekly sessions with our grandchildren that we adopted. It was priceless what we received for free. So there's been a lot of programs, community. I don't want to change Summersworth. What I want to do is brag about Summersworth and we do a pretty good job about bragging about this town. And we do a pretty good job about being a community where people want to live. But when I see this type of amendment coming in, unfortunately, today's influences in our society give me some thoughts that I don't like to think. So I don't think we have any business. I don't have a degree from the academy. I trust my chief of police to run his department in the best way that he knows how. I believe he has a staff second to none. I believe that the city manager runs his staff with impeccable, impeccable skill. So, you know, I, I, I see this, it's nice to make a, an amendment to a grant. For what purpose? All the things that are talked about in here are available within the tri-city area today. I don't think, see, I think there's a perception being given out there that Summersworth is a much larger city than it is. The mayor says, says it so well, ten square miles. So I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. Most recent thing that we tried to do and we're still working on it and we're still talking about is the homeless. The homeless still are a problem, not like in Los Angeles or New York, California, but we certainly have our concerns. We set up a winter rise program for the homeless. And I think we, as a tri-city, did the right thing. We went to the churches and the churches stepped up. At no expense to the city, we housed people when the inclement weather was outside. That is what a community is. A community officer is that person that works for the Summersworth Housing Authority that sees people come into that facility that doesn't belong there. See, housing authorities are a magnet for not-so-nice people. And that's just unfortunate, but it's true. And Officer Pratt, when he was the housing officer, working under the Eisenhower Grant, was able to take that situation and make it go away. So, um, I, I, I'm going to support the chief. He needs men, I agree. Let's give him the men. Let's not put reins on him. Let him make these decisions. There's plenty of literature out there, I'm sure he gets it. And more importantly, I'm sure in the staff meetings on a weekly basis, City Manager Bellmore runs a very good meeting. And I compliment him in front of him tonight because I really believe that. And I believe our police department performs at and above expectation. So to start trying to tell them they should be doing this, they should be doing that, I think that particular piece belongs in the committee, Public Safety Committee. And from what I understand, this was discussed a little bit and then I thank Counsel Parity for letting us know she was going to bring something here tonight for this. But I didn't expect an amendment to a resolution that was proposed so that we can get the money to get another officer. So I, I can support her. Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution two twenty-one. Further discussion, Counsel Parity.
Yes, thank you. It's great to hear everybody's thoughts. I think we're all certainly in alignment with our support of our current police department and wanting to do everything we can to make sure that they have the resources that they do. I did just want to clarify that the, the first part of the amendment, and it's, it is sounding like, um, and I would certainly be in support of just cutting the second part of the amendment after ACERT semicolon, as the city attorney recommended. The first part of this amendment is not us telling the police chief what to do, it's us, as Counsel Girding pointed out, telling the public what the police chief already told us that this officer would be assigned to do. And I think that's important because of the financial piece of this bill. So it, it's written up here up top, part of the financial piece, but not all of it. The COPS hiring grant will give us one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to cover part of the salary and benefits for the first three years. The estimated city match for that twenty-five plus parts of the salary and benefits is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars and thirty, a hundred and sixty-five thirty-eight dollars. and $165.38. And it's listed as the total project award, but really it's the total cost of the first three years of $290,038. Only $125,000 of that is being given to us as an award. $165,000 plus $38 is what we will spend in the first three years. And at the very bottom of the page here, it notes that the city also must maintain this position for one full year after the grant period. So the total, and I did the math when we had this discussion in committee, the total that the city is going to pay is $260,000, $261,717. That's doing the math of this total project, it says award, but the total project cost of $290,038. That's the first three years, so you divide that by three, that's one more year that you add to get this fourth year. And that's assuming no inflation, so that's a minimum cost. The total that it would cost to accept this grant then is $386,000, sorry, $386,717, and only 125 of that is being awarded through this grant. So again, the city's cost is $261,717. So that's, you know, roughly $260,000 of taxpayer money. My goal with this amendment is to clarify why, in the middle of a global pandemic, when we're looking at potentially over the next couple of months, our state leadership is telling us there's going to be state cuts, there's going to be revenue shortages, we don't know how much, or if that's going to be the case, some things are up, some things are down. Our finance director reported, you know, it's looking like we're okay right now, but potentially in the next couple of quarters, we could be looking at some losses. So what I really struggle with with this resolution as a whole, and this informs my intent with the amendment, is it really needs to be justified why we are adding an additional, I thought it was a 28th, but I just reviewed the grant, it looks like we have 26 current police officers, so a 27th officer. And to me, it is part of the justification of spending this much taxpayer dollars to know that part of what this officer is going to do, the chief has told us, is to implement all these great programs that we know are shown to decrease crime overall. And that, to me, is a good investment because we're saying, not only are we, you know, fishing people out of the stream, so to speak, we're also going upstream and seeing why they're falling in in the first place. Or Counsel Vincent said, or Counsel Witham, I think you said, fix the damn roads, not just invest in the jaws of life, or whatever. So, you know, I tend to think a yes-and approach is also a good approach. I'm happy to cut the second part of this amendment and just maybe bring this up in committee as a standalone proposal for this lead project, if it seems like that's something that we're interested in exploring. But I do think it's important to approach this as, if we are adding a fourth, sorry, not a fourth year, if we are adding a 27th or a 28th additional full-time police officer right now, when things are fiscally questionable, I think it's fair to try to make sure that we are elevating the types of things that are going to decrease these calls overall. And I also wanted to point out, in the grant application, some of the numbers of the community, it's been talked about a lot, that we need a lot more police. We've applied for two, it sounds like we want even more than that. In the grant, it's listed that, you know, Somersworth is a little bit more than 11,000, under 12,000 residents, and we have 26, or it does say 27 here, sworn police officers. The cities of Dover and Rochester, which have roughly 30,000 residents each, and we know that they're much bigger geographically, have 59 and 52 sworn positions. This is all coming from the grant itself. So we have a lot more police officers per capita already, and it's certainly, you know, the reason that this is listed in here is that our call numbers are much, much higher, and that's why we need more police officers in our police department. And so this is, you know, this is what's sort of informing this concern about, well, what can we do to reduce those calls instead of just continuing to add more and more and more police? How can we reduce those calls at the same time? So I just want to clarify some of that, and I don't know if it's parliamentary-wise, if I can amend my amendment, or if we should vote on this.
You would have to withdraw your amendment and then offer another one, because we do have an amendment on the table, so you can't amend an amendment.
All right. So I'd like to withdraw this amendment.
I need the second withdrawn as well. Okay. So we are back to now the question over the councils on the adoption of resolution 221. And resolution 221, having been read a first and second time, is open to further amendment. Counsel Parity.
Surprise. I'd like to offer this amendment, again, this is from the chief's memo, letting the public know what this officer is going to be used for. Whereas it is anticipated that the grant position would be assigned to the patrol petition of division of the police department, in addition to patrol duties, this officer would be assigned as a community policing officer overseeing new programs such as National Night Out, Pizza with the Police, Coffee with a Cup, and a new program known as ACER.
Counsel Parity offers the following amendment as read. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Girding. Discussion. Counsel Parity.
Sorry, I lost my thought. Go ahead.
That's okay. I can come back to you. Discussion. You good? Counsel Witham.
I suppose it's discussion on that amendment.
We're on that amendment now. The other amendment has been withdrawn. Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment. Counsel Parity.
I've remembered. Yeah, I just wanted to underscore for the purposes of specifying this, again, it has been communicated that this is already what this is intended. The point being brought up that bringing in an additional program might cause some legal troubles, the concern being named that listing these things specifically decreases any flexibility, that's sort of built into the grant already. So for the same reason that we can't add the lead program in, we actually must do what we said in the grant, which is where this language comes from. So I would say it's important for me to know that this is the intent stated in the grant. It's also, in the grant where the chief listed out what this role would do, two things are mentioned, because we were applying for two officers. And so one was, the first officer will be assigned to tackle violent crime and be a part of, you know, different teams, and the second one was what is listed here. Since we were awarded this one officer grant, it has since been communicated by the chief that this, in fact, is what he would like to use this for. So again, it's important to me to know that that's actually what this police officer will be assigned to as it's written in the grant. That really weighs in on my feeling about just the money piece of this.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion, Counsel Witham.
I'll just note, I was reviewing the memo dated September 2nd from Walter Mitchell, our city attorney, and it would appear that the amendment that's now before us is fine, according to Attorney Mitchell, because that has been articulated as part of the grant application. Thank you.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion, Counsel Mishu.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I just want to let everybody know that I'm supporting this resolution. I'm still having a hard time with the amendment, no matter what. I really don't want to take a chance in losing this, because everybody knows I'm a big pro act of getting more police on the department. And a few of you actually know that if there's a way I could do it right now, I would double the size of our police department. But unfortunately, we can't afford it. We have a chance to get one more officer to help out the chief and his crew. I'm all for it, and I really don't want to take a chance of this grant being taken away from us. I'm not big brother looking over at our chief, telling him how to run his department. He's doing an outstanding job. He's a great guy, he has a great crew. I see his men out there doing their job. They're very friendly, they're always saying hi. I don't want to lose this chance of losing this grant. Thank you.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion, Counsel Parity.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to reiterate that this, you know, has been, this part of the amendment that's on the table right now has been, in the attorney, the city attorney's opinion, there is no problem with it, and it is from the grant language itself. So this is just reiterating what the grant that we already applied for is to be used for. So there's no legal issue with this additional language being added to the resolution authorizing the city manager to accept the grant. This is language from the grant itself saying that exactly what's articulated here.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion. Counsel Dumas.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'm still not going to support the amendment because I believe that part of the culture in our city is controlled by the police department, and they set a great standard in our community. I'm hearing somebody going down a path here that really causes a concern for me. And the concern is, is that there is, in our society today, an effort to either defund or redirect funds for police. And I didn't really want to say that tonight, but that's what I'm hearing. I think it's up to the police chief and the staff. Now, I think Counsel Witham brought up a great point. When we do our annual dream list, if you would, I think that's where this belongs. And I think what comes with it is a lot more research. What are the existing facilities in a tri-city area? What's available to our residents? Because replicating this doesn't make sense to me. And by all means, because of the size of this city, I don't think we should be a lead agency for Dover-Rochester. I think we can be part of that trio team, which is a wonderful thing, in my opinion. And I think that's running fine. So I just, you know, you've got to think about where we are today. Where we are today, Somersworth isn't that bad. We're a good community. And so to come in and start changing the little intricate things, no, I think it needs a lot more discussion, go to committee, come back, and if it's a resolution, it stand on its own. I would probably think better, as long as we're not replicating the efforts that are being done in Dover-Rochester. Because I do know, I mean, there's a book, Three Ring Binder, it's the three-inch string, Three Ring Binder, and in it is all the services available to people who live in Stratford County. The 211 number is an automatic dial for people in problems. Our, I'm trying to think of the name of the person, but it's the person, the human resource person in our city that we have to help people who are coming through our city that don't have a place to stay at night, that have a need for food, that hooks them up. That 211 is a wonderful system, and that was a grant situation that was developed in Stratford County by the University of New Hampshire. So I think we're really trying to put something where it don't belong. Thank you.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion, Counsel Cameron.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I think, you know, we've kind of gone round to this for a little bit, and we had authorized the chief to apply for the grant, and he has specified exactly what the purpose of the grant is going to be for, and has been very specific in it. I'm kind of inclined to agree with some of the other councilors that we'd be getting into an area that I'll just, we really don't belong in. He is charged with, you know, doing his job, running his department, looking into other programs, facilitating that within the department, and I think that our department does a great job. And if we leave the grant the way it is and have him research some of these other areas that we're talking about, I'd be happy with that. Thank you.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion, Counsel Girding.
Thank you. Perhaps I have missed something. I feel as if the conversation has been, excuse me if this becomes across as a little offensive, but I feel like we've gone off the rails. I think that what is included in the first piece is directly taken from the grant that we have before us. It is in no way, as far as I have understood it, telling the police chief to do something as a council body. It is using the language he has created and written within this grant, and then is, it is written here now in the amendment, to further just reiterate to the taxpayers why we are adopting this grant and what it will be used for. I do not see in here something that is not within the grant. What was not within the grant has been removed, as far as I understand. Please, please correct me if I am wrong. But what I see before us is the ACER program, which I am in full support of and will speak about later. I think it is a phenomenal program, and again, is a phenomenal, phenomenal program that the chief himself has chosen to write this grant about so we could get money for our city. And nowhere here, nowhere here do I see any language about defunding the police. In fact, this is in the resolution to approve the city to further fund the police. And so I'm, I, again, perhaps I'm getting a little, going a little overboard here. However, I feel as if specifying to the citizens what this is to be for, to be used for, what their money is going to be used for, is, there's nothing wrong with that. I don't tend to stick my neck out on things like this, but I feel as if it is important to make it known, this grant, it is not, we are not defunding the police, we are not taking money away from the police department. We are not directing the chief, again, as far as I understand, to do something that he himself has not already decided to do, or has already written within the grant and will be held to do within the grant that we are now approving. Please, again, correct me if I am wrong, but I see this as just further, I feel like it has gone to, excuse me, to call some of the things that we are seeing here in the amendment, what they've been called seems to inflate it beyond what I think it actually is intended to be. Thank you.
Question over the councils on the adoption of the amendment to resolution 221. Further discussion.
Recommend a roll call vote.
Yeah, I was going to impose one anyways. Further discussion. None being so, chair will impose a roll call vote if you are in favor of the amendment to resolution 221. You will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Is the parliamentary situation clear? Chair Recognizer, the clerk, to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
No.
Vincent.
No.
Dumas.
No.
Austin.
No.
Mishu.
No.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
No.
Parity.
Yes.
The resolution is not adopted. Counsel Witham.
At the risk of this derailing, I would like to propose another amendment. Counsel Parity points out a very good point, and it should have been caught in Finance Committee, it wasn't. I chaired that committee, and I apologize. The total project award is not $290,038. That is the total project cost for three years. So I'd like to amend that under the explanation, instead of total project award, I'd like it total project cost in parentheses, three years.
Counsel Witham moves the following amendment, is that seconded, seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. None being so, all those in favor of the amendment, please state by saying aye. All those opposed, nope. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the amendment is adopted. Resolution 221, having been read a first and second time and amended, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on resolution 221 as amended. Counsel Witham.
Move the adoption of the resolution as amended.
Counsel Witham moves the adoption of resolution 221 as amended, seconded by Counselor Girding. Discussion. Counselor Girding.
Thank you. I will tone it down.
You are entitled to your opinion.
I sure am, thank you. No, that was just for me. So I do want to speak about the ACER award, the grant that's within this, because I think that it is a phenomenal program, and I'm excited to see that this is something the chief is pursuing. So thank you, chief, and thank you to Somersworth Ready Together, who put that together and in collaboration with the police department to make this something that now we see before us. ACER stands for, as I think was previously mentioned, oh, now I'm going to forget, see, acronyms. That's why they're not great. Adverse Childhood Experience Response Team. It is a team of individuals who will respond to police incidences to, again, as far as I understand, to directly intervene and assist children who may have been privy or party to the traumatic experience. Certainly, as we move further into this pandemic, and we, again, so many things are currently uncertain in the city and in this world and in this country, I think that spending our money towards our children is the most important thing. our money towards our children is the most important thing. And spending our money to alleviate or at least help potential traumatic experiences that children can experience is probably the best use of funds that I've seen for this city, in this council. I personally am extremely happy to see that. As a teacher, I think any teacher here today, regardless of what city you work in, regardless of what state you work in, has adverse childhood classroom that have experienced numbers, high numbers of ACES, again, those adverse childhood experiences. And you know, again, I know, as a teacher, that the more ACES that add up in a child's life, the less opportunity that child is provided because of the traumatic effects that are caused on that child. Again, you can, you can strike them off, count them up, and it is almost a direct correlation between the, you know, the achievement and the potential for that children. So to have a specific team in the city that can actually directly intervene in these traumatic experiences, that actually provide a better opportunity for the children of the city, and I am so proud to see that we are doing something like this. So thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 221 as amended. Further discussion. Counsel Parity.
I would, please, correct my parliamentary, if I'm not getting this right, but I would like to make an emotion to suspend council rules so that we can ask the chief to weigh in, ask, to answer a question.
Counsel Parity moves that city council rules be so far as suspended as to allow the chief to answer questions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Wither. The question for the council is on suspension of council rules. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes appear to have it? The ayes have it? City council rules are so far as suspended.
Good evening, Your Honor.
Thank you so much. I just want to join what everyone has said about how much we value your department and the work that you do and the work that all of your officers do. I think in lieu of the amendment, which was not included here, I would love if you could just talk about what your intent is with this new officer, and maybe my specific question is, the ACER program that you let us know that this new officer would be leading, is that something that the department is committed to do as part of this grant?
Absolutely is part of the grant. When we started to research this, the ACER program itself, and I have to give huge thanks to United Way on this too, because they're one of the driving forces behind this, we started to collect data on how many calls a month would qualify for ACER-type referrals. And the referrals itself, it's, it's not that much different than our CAR program. We offer somebody, you know, help and services. The people that we talked to have the ability to refuse the services if we can't force them to, to accept and stuff. Somersworth, over the period that we looked at, averaged 38 potential referrals a month. And when you start to look at that, you look at 38 referrals a month for kids and spouses or people that are victims and asking for services, that, that is going to add up pretty quickly, and I expect that person to be pretty busy with that.
Is there anything else that you would like to tell us about this officer?
Just that it, it's, Emmett had talked about community policing, we've heard it here. Counsel Wither talked about his dad. I worked for his dad. His dad was, he, he was one of my supervisors for a long, long time. Community policing here in, in Somersworth, it, it's part of our culture. It's what we do. I mean, you know, I, I don't remember, I, I don't know if any of you remember a storm two years ago where I had two officers drive by, an older lady that was shuttling her driveway, and the next thing in Foster's you saw those two cops out shoveling for that person, stuff like that. That's just things that we do, and sure, we do reinforce the law and that type of thing. That's our, part of my directive and their directive. But we hire people that fit the culture that we're trying to cultivate here, and the community policing part of that, whether it's in the schools, whether it's on the streets, that's part of what we're trying to do every day. It's, it's not something that, that we look at and say, okay, we're going to do a community policing event today. Coffee with a cop is a great thing, and that was great at your place, but it's something we do all the time. So it's, it's a culture that we've, we've created, this position. It'll put somebody in a position to actually direct some of the programs that we have now, instead of spreading it through the police department. But the culture is there, so it's, it's something, frankly, I'm pretty proud of that we've done, so.
Thank you.
Further questions to the chief? None being so. Thank you, Chief. Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 221 as amended. Further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 221 as amended, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Parity.
Yes.
Resolution 221 as amended is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 321.
Resolution 321, to authorize the city manager to prepare bid specifications for road resurfacing and associated repairs of selected streets.
Resolution 321, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 321. Counsel Wither.
Move for its adoption.
Counsel Wither moves the adoption of Resolution 321, seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. Counsel Parity.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. I was, I was looking through the street list. One of my constituents had reached out about certain streets being removed from this list, and I couldn't find previous versions of this list. I noticed, I don't see it on this version of the resolution. It may have been on the city manager details from last time, but this list, I think, was, is the quantity that it is because it comes in at just under the budget for this road paving cycle. And so I just had questions about, was the next grouping of streets going to push us way over that budget? And perhaps Counsel.
I'll refer to the Chair of the Public Works and Environment Committee.
And certainly I can defer to the city manager, or we could suspend rules for the Public Works Director. Public Works and Environment Committee was provided this list by the city engineer and Public Works Director, had been vetted through city staff. They used the Road Pavement Condition Index, the PCI that we often talk about. They selected those roads that were, that had the lowest score, if you will, so it's that lowest pavement condition index by and large. Every now and again, there's a street in here, and I'll use Edmund Street. Drew Road had a very low PCI. Edmund Street is such a tiny street, immediately adjacent to it, had a low PCI, not as low as some others. So they, they grabbed that as well. It's part of that cohesive network that we look to do when equipment's mobilized in a certain area. They then looked at our unit cost for labor and materials, hot-top pricing. They used our last known unit cost from Pike Industries that did our most recent paving work, calculated how many road miles lane width that would be, and that's how we got to this list. So you're correct in that it's, it's an assumption based upon current unit pricing that this is the amount of road work we would do, and these are the roads that are worst in the city.
Counsel Parity.
Yeah, so the, the street I'm referring to is Mount Vernon Street, and I think Counselor Dumont, you brought that up a couple of weeks ago, certainly has a lower index than a lot of the streets on this list, so I don't know if that's a question for Public Works or.
City manager.
Someone knows about that one.
Yes, the way the list, with, with the Counsel Wither was referring to also is why we're grabbing these other particular small roads or roads in general that might have a higher index than perhaps a Mount Vernon Street or some other street, is we want to minimize costs, because any construction company we have has to mobilize, so they can't be jumping from one street to another street to another street. So it's to minimize the mobilization cost. We don't know what the, until we get the bids, we don't know if we can grab another road. When the bids come in, we could certainly come back to council through committee or in regards to adding another street. So this is the recommendation, based on available funds, based on our estimates from our last bids. Once we get the bids, we can certainly revisit this and try to add something, but this is what's been endorsed by the Public Works Committee in regards to the list. I don't know if there's anything else to add that hasn't been spoken to regarding this particular list and how we develop it. It's through the, again, the, the engineering report that's done in regards to the index of streets, and the reason, again, is the mobilization costs we're trying to minimize, and we're grabbing these neighborhood streets. We want to get the connecting, the small connecting roads while we're in that particular area.
Thanks.
Hopefully that adds to the discussion.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 321. Further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 321, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Parity.
Yes.
Resolution 321 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 421.
Resolution 421, authorizing the city manager to sign a lease purchase agreement for the purchase of city vehicles.
Resolution 421, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 421. Counsel Dumont, I mean, sorry, Counselor Austin. I don't know why.
You want to say.
It's a big issue. Counselor Austin.
I'll move for its adoption.
Counselor Austin moves the adoption of Resolution 421, seconded by Counselor Dumont. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor. Counsel Girding.
I just wanted to ask the city manager a question for clarity, just for people viewing at home, I think I know the answer, but this was previously included in the city's budget, correct?
City manager.
The down payment is, was approved in the city budget. These are lease purchases. We, we budget moving forward based on the quotes we received. We received at least three quotes. We're going with this particular company, and at the end of the term of the lease, the city will actually own the vehicle outright.
Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 421. Further discussion. Counsel Wither.
Thank you. It's a great question, and I'm glad the city manager brings up the, the point about this is a lease purchase. People hear lease, and they think what you and I might typically do with an automobile lease, I don't lease a vehicle, my wife does, but after three years and so many miles, you turn it in and up a new lease. That's not the case with this. So the, the term has always made me scratch my head, it's just, I think it's misleading. So I appreciate the question and the response. My comment is more to do with a recent observation. Director Brobinski knows that periodically I poke my head into the public works garage. I'll go to the fire station, drive by the TD. I'm kind of an out and about city counselor, I guess. And when I was last into the public works garage to say hello and to see a new sign that they had purchased, what I noticed in the garage, and here we are, I guess it was August at the time, both of the city sidewalk tractors, Counselor Sprague, if you're watching, you can turn it off for five minutes.
Please.
Both of the city sidewalk tractors were out of service, broken down for various reasons. And you say, what are they doing this time of year? One of them has a mower that cuts the roadside, it's got like an arm. The other one has a mower on the front where they cut like the old landfill and things of that nature. So they're used year-round. Our sidewalk tractors have been dying a slow death almost since the day we got them, to no fault of current administration, it was prior directors and prior councils. We purchased a less than adequate, we purchased two less than adequate machines. I'm not sure they can last this, this upcoming winter. They're broken down now, right? We haven't even gotten to the plowing season. So I don't want to derail this, this is a need, but I would ask the city manager, I'm just using this as a platform to, to share this, if we could put it on the next Public Works and Environment Committee agenda, an update on the current tractors and where we are in the CIP in terms of a new piece of equipment, and can we not expedite that? So just using this as an opportunity. Thank you.
Question for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 421. Further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 421, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Parity.
Yes.
Resolution 421 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 521.
Resolution 521, to authorize the city manager to contract with Port One Architects of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, to provide final design services to construct a new fire station at the location of the current fire station on Maple Street.
Resolution 521, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 521. Counselor Austin, I almost said Dumont again. Counselor Austin.
I will move for its adoption, please.
Counselor Austin moves the adoption of Resolution 521, seconded by Counselor Cameron. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 521, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Parity.
Yes.
Resolution 521 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 721.
Resolution 721, to authorize the city manager to order a Ford pickup truck for the Department of Public Works, which will be funded by a lease purchase agreement.
Resolution 721, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 721. Counsel Wither.
You know, the cricket is chirping, and I, I often say during public hearings, we should have that sound effect, so we're a little.
It's not chirping, but certainly you guys being quiet.
I, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Counsel Wither moves the adoption of Resolution 721, seconded by, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 721, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Austin.
Yes.
Micho.
Yes.
Witham.
Yes.
Girding.
Yes.
Cameron.
Yes.
Parity.
Yes.
Resolution 721 is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 921.
Resolution 921, to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with CMA Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for engineering services associated with the Transportation Alternatives Program grant.
Resolution 921, having been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be offered, the chair will obtain a motion on Resolution 921. Counsel Wither.
Move for its adoption.
Counsel Wither moves the adoption of Resolution 921, seconded by Counsel Parity. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of Resolution 921, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call a roll.
Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Vincent.
Yes.
Dumont.
Yes.
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Parity?
Yes.
Resolution nine twenty-one is adopted. Brings us to agenda item number fifteen, which is new business. Chair recognizes the clerk?
Your honor?
Yep.
I'd like to move that resolution eleven twenty-one be read by title only.
Counsel Witham moves that resolution eleven twenty-one be read by title only, seconded by Counselor Dumont. The question before the council is that resolution eleven twenty-one be read by title, is that council rules be so far suspended as to allow a reading on resolution eleven twenty-one by title only? All those in favor of suspension of council rules, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, city council rules are so far suspended. Resolution eleven twenty-one will be read by title only. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution eleven twenty-one by title only.
Resolution eleven twenty-one, to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with Apex Construction of Summersworth, New Hampshire, for the construction of wastewater treatment facility upgrades.
Counsel Witham?
I'd like to move to suspend council rules to act on this this evening because of its urgency.
Counsel Witham moves that city council rules be so far suspended as to allow a second reading on resolution eleven twenty-one this evening, seconded by Counselor Dumont. Discussion. The question for the council, Counselor Parity?
Yes, so I just received a paper copy of this this evening, so I just want to reiterate, and maybe instead of reading the whole thing, we could just read the first line from each one, so I know what I'm looking at. I have the eleven twenty-one that was put out in the packet, which is different from what the city manager has handed me, so I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right one. It looks like we're going to have another one that was split from this, and I just want to know what the language is.
I defer to the city manager, but eleven twenty-one relates to some additional work at the wastewater treatment facility associated with the water line. It's an additional amount of seventy-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. So it ups the cost of the overall project.
It's the three paragraph one?
Yes.
Okay.
I will put council in recess for about four minutes, so people can read the document. Council will come to order?
Oh, good, yeah.
Question for the council is on suspension of council rules. All those for a second reading on resolution eleven twenty-one this evening. All those in favor of suspension of council rules, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far suspended. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on resolution eleven twenty-one.
Resolution eleven twenty-one, to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with Apex Construction of Summersworth, New Hampshire, for the construction of wastewater treatment facility upgrades.
Resolution eleven twenty-one, have been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on resolution eleven twenty-one. Counsel Witham?
Move for its adoption.
Counsel Witham moves the adoption of resolution eleven twenty-one, seconded by Counselor Micho. Discussion. Counsel Witham?
As I may have mentioned, there's some additional work concerning the water line at the wastewater treatment plant that was unanticipated. I will tell you that when the Public Works and Environment Committee of a couple of sessions ago toured the wastewater treatment plant in anticipation of moving forward with this construction project, the water line was mentioned there, and it was an unknown. Where the line was, its condition, a variety of factors with regard to the water line were unknown. They were hoping it was still going to be serviceable, work around, but obviously that did not turn out to be the case. So that's where this comes into play.
Question for the councils on the adoption of resolution eleven twenty-one, further discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of resolution eleven twenty-one, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Yes.
Dumont?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Parity?
Yes.
Resolution eleven twenty-one is adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on resolution twelve twenty-one.
Resolution twelve twenty-one, to recognize the balance of funding available for the wastewater treatment facility upgrades as contingency, and to authorize the city manager to approve any further change orders for this project.
Resolution eleven twenty, resolution twelve twenty-one will remain in first reading until the September twenty-first regular scheduled meeting.
Your honor, that was not to be read by title only.
Yeah, he has to read the whole resolution. It was just suspend rules.
That's my fault.
Well, I don't have my resolution in front of me because Counselor Vincent stole it from me tonight, so.
Kenny.
Mister clerk, if you can continue to read stuff.
Continuing on from the title, created September ninth, twenty twenty, whereas the Summersworth City Council adopted resolution thirty-six dash twenty to authorize the city manager to contract with Apex Construction of Summersworth, New Hampshire, for the construction of upgrades to the wastewater treatment facility. And whereas, over the course of construction, unknown or unanticipated issues may arise, requiring additional work that may increase the cost of twenty-six dollars available in this, there is currently one hundred seventy-seven thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars available in approved funding after consideration of resolution eleven dash twenty-one that the city considers contingency for this project. And whereas, to keep the project moving in an effective and efficient manner, the city manager should be authorized to approve any future change orders not to exceed the amount of contingency available and that are determined to be in the best interest of the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Summersworth, that the balance of one hundred seventy-seven thousand one hundred twenty-six dollars available in approved funding for this project shall be considered contingency for this project. And be it further resolved by the city council of the city of Summersworth, that the city manager is authorized to approve any future change orders not to exceed the amount of contingency available and that are determined to be in the best interest of the city. Authorization sponsored by Mayor Dana S. Hilliard, David A. Witham, counselor, approved city attorney.
Counsel Witham?
Move to suspend council rules to act on the resolution this evening.
Counsel Witham moves that city council rules be so far suspended as to allow a second reading on resolution twelve twenty-one this evening. Seconded by Counselor Parity. Question for the council is on suspension of council rules. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and city council rules are so far suspended. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on resolution treatment facility one.
Resolution twelve twenty-one, to recognize the balance of funding available for the wastewater treatment facility upgrades as contingency, and to authorize the city manager to approve any further change orders for this project.
Resolution twelve twenty-one, have been ready first and second time, is open to further amendment. No amendment be it offered, the chair will obtain a motion on resolution twelve twenty-one. Counsel Witham?
Move for its adoption.
Counsel Witham moves the adoption of resolution twelve twenty-one, seconded by Counselor Austin. Discussion. None being so, if you are in favor of the adoption of resolution twelve twenty-one, you will state by saying yes. If you are opposed, you will state by saying no. Chair recognizes the clerk to call the roll.
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Dumont?
Yes.
Austin?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Witham?
Yes.
Girding?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Parity?
Yes.
Resolution twelve twenty-one is adopted. Brings us to agenda item under other, a vote to grant a one-year extension from November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, to November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, for the previously approved Community Revitalization Tax Relief Incentive Program, seventy-nine E, project at eight government way for David H. F. Baker Sumdown L L C. The question will be on the grant extension for a year. The vote will be to authorize the grant extension for a year. Discussion. Counsel Dumont?
Thank you, your honor. Yes, when city manager Bellmore called me about this particular request, I certainly had no objection to this whatsoever. Mister Baker has proved himself to be a stellar member of our community. He has helped us become a better place, and so I don't think this request for an extension because of everything that we're going through with, through our society and the economy and everything else like that, this is very reasonable. Thank you.
City manager?
Yeah, just to clarify, I called Counselor Dumont as chair of the E D C. Generally, the process been to go to the E D C, to vet out these applications, and then a forward recommendation to the city council. The chairman of the E D C, as he just mentioned, didn't feel a need to hold a meeting to have council act upon it. We said, I figured if the council felt that needed to be further vetted by some council committee, we could place it on hold until that such time a committee could look at it. But I talked to Mister Baker, he's here to answer any questions. Quite frankly, from my perspective, it seemed like a reasonable request. If it was for five years or something, that'd be another story. It's for one year. He's committed to the project, at least that's what he's conveyed to me. And I guess that's all I have to offer, your honor.
Without objection from council, we will proceed forward with the vote for the grant extension.
Question?
Question?
Question for the city manager?
Counsel Witham?
Do you recall how many years the seventy-nine E tax relief was granted for?
Seven. I get a little prompt from Mister Baker. Thank you.
So it would have started this year, where we're starting in twenty twenty-one, instead of the tax exempt status ending in twenty twenty-seven, it would now end in twenty twenty-eight? Is that the math that I would be doing? So this extension moves the tail end as well.
Yes. Thank you, yes. And he did, may I?
Yep, without objection.
He also provided an escrow. We do record these, so we'll engage city attorney at his expense to modify any recording, to extend that window of opportunity to complete the project and/or to realize the tax benefit.
And the five hundred is assumed to be enough?
If not, he'll replenish it, but usually a couple hours of work will cover it.
Question for the council is on the adoption of the grant extension. Further discussion. Counsel Parity?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in as another member of the Economic Development Committee that I think it's very reasonable to grant this year extension, given COVID and everything else. And just want to reiterate everything that Counselor Dumont did.
Question for the council is on the authorization of the grant discussion, grant extension. Further discussion. None being so, all those in favor of the grant extension, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes have it, and the grant is extended. Brings us to agenda item number sixty, which is closing comments by visitors. Any closing comments by visitors this evening? Please come forward, state the name, the address that you live in, and the ward that you live in, if you have that applicable information. Any closing comments by visitors?
Emmett.
Good evening again.
Good evening. Emmett Soldati, Seven Prospects, Ward One. First, I just wanted to thank all of you for having this conversation about public safety. In particular, Counselor Peppin, you said something that really struck with me, that so many of our police officers do so much good work for this city, including social work. And I think also about all of our firefighters that are out there not only fighting fires, but are distributing Narcan. And we don't call them overdose fighters. And the conversations we're having tonight are reflecting how public safety needs are changing in this city, and they're changing in this country. I think at a certain point, and many of you, some of you counselors have raised, at what point is just adding another staffer going to solve the problem? Or at what point is just adding the same kind of staffer another is going to solve the problem? Because we know, for example, in our schools, when we see an increasing number of young children with special needs that need to be addressed, we don't just hire another teacher. We hire someone with specialized training to resolve those needs, to work on those needs. So we do have a track record in this city and in this country of looking at what the needs of our local community is and addressing that. You know, if I get pulled over when I have a headlight out, the police officer doesn't fix the headlight. Although I did have one chief out, and thank you for not pulling me over. It would be nice if we did, but I take it to mechanic. And I think what we're talking about here is not putting on the backs of our law enforcement agencies to solve every single problem. And in fact, look at the needs of the future of our community, of its health, of its wellness, of feeling connected and not being isolated, and how we can address that. And some of you have raised, particularly Counselor Witham with your father's noble service, about how we can have very incredible officers really supporting their community, supporting their neighbors. And I think we have seen so many folks here that have done that. And Counselor Witham, you know, we want to look to our leadership to really, you know, select and pick these police officers. And I would tend to agree with that. And I would hope that everyone that serves this city can serve it as well as your father did. But I think there is, as Counselor Vincent pointed out, something we as representatives of taxpayers or the taxpayers need to recognize, because I'm a big fan of our chief. He's done incredible work. But as you pointed out, Counselor Vincent, and I think you meant a one eighty, not a three sixty, he said we turned to one eighty, which means that if we are looking for our future, we cannot build our public safety around one individual, one incredible individual. We can't build our public safety around one leader. We need to build it for what we know that the needs of our community are. Because I'm sorry, the lead program is not a dream. It should not be on a dream list. The lead program is something that we know and has been proven to help Summersworth's challenges today, that may not have been the case thirty or forty years ago, but it is today what we need. And so I think it is prudent of all of our counselors to look at all of the different agencies, all of the different departments that manage the safety and well-being of our citizens and our residents, to recognize you should have a voice in that process. I should have a voice in that process. Because while we trust the people today that are doing a phenomenal job, I want to make sure that we keep that job ready to change as the needs of our communities change. I hope this is not the end of that conversation. I hope it's the beginning of that conversation, because public safety does look a lot different than it did a previous generation or two generations to go. I think we need to include more voices from our constituents about what they feel about our firefighters and our police officers. Why, when do they make a call, or who are the folks that don't make the call? Those are the questions that we need to ask. So I'm grateful for folks that have sought to recommit the values of what a community police officer does. Again, I do believe that the mission of law enforcement here is community policing. And if that's the case, we should have no problem adding an amendment that simply recommits us and our values. Simply tells us what we already believe, that our law enforcement, our firefighters, our teachers should be serving the needs of the community. And none of us should have a problem committing to those values here in Summersworth. Thank you.
Any further comments by visitors? Any further comments by visitors this evening? Good evening, and welcome.
Dave Baker, ninety-eight Fairview Avenue, Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I just want to say a few things I think is important for you guys to understand. Sometimes when you live in a community, you don't see it. I live outside and I see a lot. Emmett, I think, gosh, now five years ago, he's a tenant of mine, as you know, and a T. Tolar. You know, I got to tell you, this city council is a very forward-looking city council, and I think what you've done in your investment that you made going in before any of this started, momentum, positive momentum started, is a real commitment to you. And I think, as I told you this before, I think others will follow your, what you've done. I think there's a lot of very good things happening. I can see it from the outside. I think the two very important things we need to focus on are bringing young people into the city and businesses. So I think Emmett is a perfect example of what we're trying to do. Again, if you can attract the businesses and provide them a rent that's a manageable rent that allows them to build their business, then they can expand. And again, the idea is making a long-term investment, not trying to take out as much cash as you can in a very short period of time. So I want to say that, you know, this COVID-19 has sort of stopped some of the forward momentum, but it's not halted. It's halted it, but not stopped it. And I want to make sure you guys all understand that. I would say I get, thanks to Emmett's help and others, I get several calls a week of people looking to locate businesses in Summersworth. People are starting to understand how great a community this is. And it's COVID-19 has actually made people from outside the area want to move to New Hampshire. I think this is going to be one of the areas they want to move to. So, you know, don't lose faith. What you guys have done is tremendous. Issues that we struggle, and, you know, over the next five years, there's going to be a lot of positive change. And a lot of these issues that we struggle with in this community, I think will be greatly ameliorated by bringing a business in and creating an economic vitality here that hasn't been seen in many, many years. And I think we have the platform to do it. We know we have a tremendous amount of idle real estate that is a fraction of the cost of several towns south of here. And I would argue this is a much better laid out area to execute this. So whether it's restaurants, knowledge businesses, the stage is set, and now it's up to us to execute. Now, we could have done it faster, but I don't want any partners, because when I do it myself, speaking myself, I can do it the way I want to do it. I can charge lower rents. I'm looking for a lot, not a lot of positive cash flow. I'm looking to reinvest in the business and my tenants. Now, it's hard to do when you raise money outside to do that. So at some point, we may, but again, so we've been a slow start, but again, I want to tell you that the stage is set. Right now, coming out of this crisis, and I believe more businesses will move here, and I think you guys will start to see that, you'll start to harvest some of a lot of your hard work. So I just want to make sure you know that and you understand. A lot of the work that you've done has not been for naught, and I just think you're going to see real benefits in the back end. The key is young people who've revitalized the community, knowledge workers, don't tax the community a lot, provide a lot back, and most importantly, the small businesses that can thrive. And let me give you one example. The woman that I have in one of my, in one of my properties, I charge her one-third of rent that she paid in Portsmouth. Now she has the ability, her business has grown so much, and she's such a go-getter, she's going to rent the new space in eight government way at three times the rent. She would have never been able to do that if we didn't give her the break in the front end. So it's about taking a long-term perspective to help this community grow and help these businesses come here. Now hopefully, others will come behind me and do the same type of thing. I'm the first guy in the water on this concept, but it works. And it makes a whole big difference to the community, to the tax base, and most importantly, we want to really improve our school system, which I think is very undervalued relative to the area. So I just want to thank you for all your hard work project, and, you know, I'm sort of, you know, this is one of my projects, and the eight government way project's a very important project. I'm investing a lot of money in it, creating a lot of public space for the benefit of the community, but I understand that's what has to be done. Creating an example for others to follow. But more importantly, it really will really enhance that space, an area that we hope to develop as a city. So again, thank you for all your helping. There's more good to come in the future. Thank you.
Further comments by visitors? Any further comments by visitors? Now being so, moves us on to Agenda Item Number 17, which is closing comments by council members. We'll start on the at-large side, Council Parity, and then work this way.
Oh, my goodness, what a surprise. Hello. Yeah, well, I just wanted to say thank you to this new city clerk for all the hard work that you and the entire staff and the city manager and everybody else. I know we had a lot of volunteers helping with the election. It went really smoothly. I stopped by a couple of wards, I talked to a lot of voters, and they were all happily pleased at how quickly they were able to get in and out of wards. I know Counselor Gerting was volunteering at one of the wards. So I'm just really excited as somebody who is the chair of the Election Review Planning Commission, we put together that plan. I think the city manager's done a great job in executing it, making sure that people knew that wards three and wards four were changed, making sure that, you know, people knew that there was going to be safety measures in place when they showed up. We didn't have any issues that I've heard of. So I just want to thank the city manager and just say congrats to the city clerk for your first election. And hopefully, this was a good experience so that in November, we can do it all again. And regarding the discussion around the cops hiring grant, I just wanted to thank all my fellow counselors for engaging in that discussion. I think it's really important that we continue to, you know, not only look at what's in front of us on the table that we've been planning for years and years, and I know I'm still catching up to that. This is my first year on council, and I know that you've all had some of these discussions for a really long time. But also looking forward, and I so appreciate Mr. Baker, your comments in keeping that forward momentum moving. What can we do now, discussion tonight, addressing the future's problems? So I just really appreciate everyone's discussion tonight. Thanks.
At-large, Counselor. Counselor Cameron.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Counselor Paradise said. Thank you, Jonathan, for your hard work yesterday and all the poll workers that were out. I know it was a different type of election for everybody. So in reading some of the articles I've read in some of the other towns, they had a few issues, and there weren't any in ours. So kudos to everybody for that. And I will be at the next one helping out. I did take some time for myself yesterday. And on a closing remark, I'd like to say happy birthday to my son, because today's his birthday. So happy birthday, Derek.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large, Counselor. Counselor Gertig.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to continue with those thanks. It was, as someone who worked at Ward Five yesterday as a volunteer, it went very, very smoothly. It was a great day. Everyone that I worked with was phenomenal. Spirits were high. Again, so thank you to every volunteer throughout the city who helped with the election. Thank you again to Jonathan. It was great. You did a great job yesterday, as did the new deputy city clerk. So thanks to her. Also, thank you to DPW workers. They were great. Oh, my gosh, having them there to clean the spots was like, it was great. Everyone was commenting how amazing they were and how phenomenal the job they did. So please, happy to pass that on. But yeah, feeling confident going into November. I think really, we have a great system put in place, and I think November will go very smoothly. I also wanted to comment on something that had been recently published in the Fosters and had been released from the School Board in regards to the approximately $880,000 budget that was sent back to us here in the city. I have been hearing some questions or fielding some questions and hearing some concerns from residents in regards to this. And so I wanted to just kind of provide a layout as to why that money is the pandemic, just for some clarity and understanding. As the pandemic was happening, the School Board obviously needed to be certain that extra expenses weren't going to, you know, occur. We had no idea, just like everyone here today had no idea what the pandemic would entail. And as far as I understand, the School Board and our superintendent did a great job making sure that, you know, the school operated as best as it possibly could and under the circumstances. Certainly come the end of the school year, which ended a little bit earlier this year, it was the end of May for us, they had a better understanding as to how much either extra expenses or extra revenue that would, not revenue, excuse me, extra money left over that there would be. And I believe that around that time, May or June, they started to examine what was left and found that there was additional funding due to things such as transportation costs that were saved, electrical costs that were saved, specialized transportation in particular can be extremely expensive. And so having these additional monies available, it's the end of the school year, there's nothing at that point budgeted that they could spend it on. Certainly in June, we did not have any direction from either the governor, the state, the Department of Education, as to what the fall would look like. And so it's my understanding at that point that the School Board, along with the superintendent, decided that that money was best to just be sent back to the city. Now, what this then means is that the city has access to this money. It goes into our general fund. It cannot, without our approval, be spent on this current school year. So there has been a large discussion as to what this current school year looks like. Why, you know, if we are talking about things like our HVAC system, why cannot that extra money just go right into the new HVAC? But unfortunately, there's a state law that prevents that money from directly just being used in additional years. It has to legally be returned to us here at the city. I believe this was outlined in the article. I just wanted to clarify. Next year, why can't we buy some questions as to, you know, why can't that money just go float over to the next year? Why can't we buy a bunch of laptops that, you know, we certainly could utilize in our remote learning? And again, it was kind of a confluence of issues where we didn't quite yet understand or know what the fall would look like for schooling. That decision hadn't been made. There was really no guidance from us, from, you know, the state. And we were just, I think, again, without speaking for the School Board, I think they were trying to make the best decision, the most fiscally responsible decision for the taxpayers here in the city. And certainly, now that that money has been sent back to us, I entrust us to do the exact same. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At-large, Counselor. Counselor Witham.
A great conversation in here tonight, and it gives rise to me thinking about some things that I'd like to try to capture here in these closing comments with a few quick notes and scribbles. So if it comes across a bit disjointed, I apologize. But, you know, 25, 30 years ago, I remember as part of my work, taking a trip to Berlin, New Hampshire, and I met with then-fire chief Paul Fortier. Paul Fortier grew up in Berlin. Maybe some of you knew Chief Fortier. He was a great guy. He was a great fire chief. And as part of my visit, we got in his command car. I don't even think it was called the command car back then. It was just the fire chief's car. And we drove around the city, and he was showing me the paper mill, which was still alive and active at that point in time, very busy. Berlin was a big city, certainly smaller then, certainly much smaller now. But as we drove around 25 or 30 years ago, I remarked about how Berlin had just a much different dynamic in terms of its industrial base, its fire load than in Summersworth. Then their population at the time, I think, was actually just a little bit bigger than ours back then. That has certainly changed. And I began asking him about his call volume. And what was interesting is here we had a bustling, at least at the time, industry-ridden community, lots of things that could burn. And they did. My numbers are just guestimates now, because I don't remember now. But they were doing like 250 fire calls a year. And here in Summersworth, we were doing 500 or 600 fire calls a year back then. So on a per capita basis, to use that measurement, we were much busier than them. And I couldn't understand it. It didn't make any sense to me. And the chief said to me at the time, he said, "Well, Dave, up here," he says, "People," he says, "for example, they'll have a chimney fire, and they'll put it out themselves. They don't call the fire department." Not a good idea. That's what was going on. And I wonder, as we talk about law enforcement, does that not happen? You know, so per capita is a measurement, but it doesn't tell the whole story, I guess is the point that I want to make. And I think as we are now in 2020, soon in 2021, there is a growing reliance on members of the general public when there's something wrong, define wrong. It looks, something's out of place. People pick up the phone, and they don't dial 211. They dial 911. Maybe they should call 211. Maybe they should call a counselor to help them with their financial problems, or maybe they should seek out services. So the point is, well-made then. They don't. They call 911. When there's a naked man in front of the Cumberland Farms with a knife, they're calling 911, and the police department's responding. Chances are, very strong likelihood, that that's a mental illness issue, right? But it doesn't come in as a mental illness issue. It comes in as a naked man with a knife in front of the Cumberland Farms. When the police department gets dispatched to a home because a husband and wife are arguing, they get called because there's a potential fight. But when they get there, what it is, it's an argument over finances because they don't know how to manage their money, or someone just lost their job, or maybe in many cases, there's some alcohol involved. So we have substance abuse. So the point is, is that our police officers get thrust into these dynamics because the phone is picked up and people call 911. That's the model we're in. Is it a good model? Probably not. We need to spend time and effort upfront. So the conversation here tonight is fabulous, and I know that everybody in the room heard it. So it's now incumbent upon us to take that momentum and continue to move it. Because you're going to continue to call 911 for issues that aren't really 911. Or maybe they are initially, and then we need to break them down from there. So I don't know how I got to Berlin, New Hampshire, but it occurred to me, and there you go. And I'm going to stop talking because I'm done.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward One, Counselor. Counselor Pepin.
Yeah, I wasn't going to say anything at all this evening, but this conversation needs to go a little bit further. I'm just probably too old-fashioned, I guess. I don't know. I'm getting on in age or whatever. But yeah, I'm at the point right now that we ask our teachers right now to educate our kids. And through the years, it used to be writing, write and read the thick, and that's all you needed to graduate out of school, just the ABCs. Now the list is so long, and they haven't added any hours into the education of the students. And now they're teaching everything, from sex education to ABCs, to how to cook breakfast, to everything else, because some of the parents are not there, or whatever the reasoning is, or whatever the social is. Police departments and fire departments, EMTs and everything else, their field has grown so much. And I just wonder how much that a teacher can educate the kids and get a good education to them, because their field has gotten so big. And also, the police department's field has gotten so big. The firefighter's field has gotten so big. Because I could talk to that a little bit. You've got to be pot electrician. You've got to be an auto mechanic when you go to a car accident. You've got to be part of a chemist to do a chemical spill. All right? And you've got to be a structural engineer when you're fighting a fire to make sure the building doesn't fall on you. And then you've got to know fire tactics and a whole bunch of things. Police department, I can't tell you all the lists, but there's a whole bunch of them. And sometimes I wonder how much you can you cram into one person's head that they have to, they have to deal with all the situations? And how much the taxpayer pays for it? I mean, we do the best that we can possibly can. We have a department head that takes care of the highway department, the wastewater treatment department, and the water department. I mean, most cities and towns have an individual for each one of these facilities. Even our department heads are over. Scott takes care of the library, takes care of all the department maintenance of all the buildings and whatever, and a bunch of other things that we can't even talk about. I mean, that I can't even imagine, plus the finances. And it's just gotten to the point that when I look at the police department and what we ask to add on to their things, I don't even know why anyone wants to be a police officer anymore. They're not respected at all. And I don't even know how anyone wants to apply for that job, to be perfectly honest. But if you look at the country, the way the country is right now. But my hat's off to the police officers. I support our police officers. I support our chief. I support our fire chief. I support the EMS system that we have. My hat's off to them because they do more than what they're asked for. And we keep on piling it on every time. We want something else added on to another organization that they, they got all they can do, they handle what they got. And your services are affected by this. Because if you have too much that you can't handle and do a good product out there. So that's what's important to me, is to make sure that we can establish and give a good product out there. And if you keep on dumping stuff on to them and they can't finish the first job that they started, how do you expect them to be good at whatever they're doing? So I, I'm sorry, I'm off on a ramble right now, but I've been wound up like an eight-day clot because I've been watching too much TV and I'm watching too much news. So, and I like changing the channels, and it just frustrates me to see what's going on in this world right now. And I wasn't going to bring it up, but I've gotten so many phone calls and texts about the flags and whatever. I'll be perfectly honest with you, the mayor's been great of putting out any type of flag that's been out there. He's putting out the Catholic flag. He's putting out people that don't belong in religions, atheist flags. Be honest with you, I don't care what flag flies out there. It isn't the flag that makes the thing. It's the people that are there. I believe in Black Lives Matter. I believe in all lives matter. Does that make me a bigot or whatever? I don't know. But I don't understand how people will riot because a black person gets killed, but another black person somewhere else doesn't get, gets killed, and nothing's said or done. If a police officer gets killed, you don't see the police department burning down buildings or whatever. And all you see is them shooting Molotov cocktails at them. I just don't understand where this society has gone to right now, and it frustrates me. I believe that all people are equal. I got that from my Catholic religion. Sorry, people that don't like Catholics or whatever. But I do believe in that. And I try to treat everybody very, very, as much like I like to be treated myself. So I guess I've rambled on enough, and I've probably pissed off a lot of people. Sorry.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Two, Counselor. Counselor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. And the reason why the police department holds that bag, as someone said along the way, they're the first responders who see it. Now for the more simpler things in life. The drop-off box at City Hall. Isn't that beautiful? Made of stainless steel. I saw it. It looks so professional. Now people can leave their bills in there. That is perfect. I just thought it was important to bring it up. You needed a little laugh. I met with one of my constituents. I guess you can say it's a constituent. I think everybody that sees a constituent, even though he's not in my ward. And that was up on Mount Vernon, Dan DeSantis. And I only felt it, I only felt compelled to come out and speak because he did call me. Some people think Dan's a little rough around the edges. I personally don't. I think it's, it's that he has so much compassion. And he is complaining about his street still. And there is some grass growing up to the street, so maybe the public works could go up there and trim it up again. Because when he does look out his porch, he sees this grass this tall out the cracks. So I felt compelled to come out and say, you know, because his voice should be heard, I think. He had some other concerns about the fire department, but we're going to walk before we run with that. And I just wanted to give all his concerns. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Ward Three, Counselor. Counselor Dumont.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just going to jump on Counselor Vincent's. Dan DeSantis, to know him is to love him. I can say that, and we had this conversation last week. I pray for him every day. He's going through a tough time in his life. His health is not the best. But he'll call up and want to debate. And so I had to say to Dan, "As much as I love you, Dan, we're not going to debate. You need to rest, take care of yourself, and think of your family." He, "What are we going to talk about?" And I says, "Well, I've got some new birds coming to my feeders. Do you like birds?" He didn't like birds. So anyways, Dan is, to know him is to love him. And he's, boy, I'll tell you, for a guy from Ohio, I don't know how many of you have lived in Ohio in your life, but I've had that opportunity. Ohio presents itself with unique challenges. As one example, Ku Klux Klan meets on the corners of the street in Columbus and Zanesville and Wheelon, West Virginia. I mean, and they hand out their literature. And they certainly don't indoctrinate the youth in that area in good things to be doing. But Dan coming from that part of the country, I understand because I lived there. So Dan, get well soon, and we can debate. But the drive-up window, I think the box is wonderful. Did you put that in?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, anyways, I think it's wonderful. You know, if you want a community to stand out that believes in their citizens, Summersworth of the three cities was the only one that had the drive-up window. And I got to tell you, although it got to the point where you had to wait in line a little bit more, like at the first of the month or the end of the month, no calls saying what a lousy idea this is. So I hope everybody keeps using the drive-up window because it's a wonderful thing. And the online thing, as the city manager mentioned. I'm hoping that the fire committee on the going towards us building our new fire department, although I didn't support the budget, and I still don't. I think seven million dollars is way too much to spend on a fire department. For Somersworth, I'd like to ask that the committee consider taking a tour of the Broeck Fire Department. I received a call. They're not quite completed, but from what it was explained to me and how it was presented, if you want to see a five-million-dollar fire station, go to Broeck. And I started asking questions of the person talking to me. And, you know, "Does it have this? It has that, blah, 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 blah." I don't know, but the committee's got their task. But I would think that they would take a look anyways and have a discussion about it because Broeck almost has their brand-new fire department. And their cost is five million. The joint building committee at the school. Having the opportunity to work with people for a long time in my life has been a blessing. But I can think of no finer group than the people on the school board, especially those people who have gone through these renovations in the past five years. I was fortunate enough to serve on three committees with Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin runs a great meeting, and we are reaching goals with these examples of the middle school needing a elevator. And I can remember the mayor talking to us at the joint building committee. And it didn't seem to be two nickels to rub together. And I know the mayor picked the phone up and called about every person that he knew that was in Washington DC. And he knows quite a few people. But it just didn't seem like they could put something together for us. Well, they're going to get their elevator. And it's because they had work on a JBC, but the mayor's leadership, so I want to thank you for that. That's, those joint building committees, I think every counselor should have the opportunity. Counselor Peppin is a great leader, and I really enjoy them. And the staff of the school performs exceedingly well. And unfortunately, our new superintendent, I call him new, Bob, is going to retire at the end of this school year. And I think he's been a great person, doing a good job. The one thing I want to just emphasize, the climate, the culture. Sometimes when you look at culture, you think about Greek, Italian, you know, whatever. We had them all in Somersworth, an all-welcoming community, and we still do, the Indonesian population. These people want a comfortable and safe place to live, and they choose us. Amen. The spending money for children, the attitude between this body and the school board, as has been said in the past, is far different than the cultures and the communities around us. We work together for the better of the kids. And there's no better thing that shows that, that when in a time of crisis, we got together and turn a problem into an opportunity. So proud of this community because of that culture. Yeah, that's not, we can't buy them everything, but we certainly can talk about it and find a solution. The money that was left over this year, as Counselor Girding alluded to. Oh, this is good.
We paid a power bill?
Was that my call?
You're being told.
Okay, I'll make it quick. You got a button on your table, mayor?
Ah, we're good. I'm looking at the clock. You still got twenty minutes. Not that we need to stay another twenty minutes, but we're still good.
I just wanted to say that the working relationship in this community, and that's what I really want everybody to be considerate of, where we are. Because I hear comments like, gee, if we could be like where they're from, maybe Rochester, New York, maybe Florida somewhere. I got to tell you something. God has given me the opportunity to live in this country in many different states. And I can tell you, when it came time to make a decision to where you wanted to go and retire and relax, retire didn't happen for me, but Somersworth did. And being born and raised here, there was a lot here. And when I came back, it was there. I was envious of Counselor Girding's efforts in the Culture Commission, which was established by the mayor when I was the first chair. And one of the things I didn't realize, it changed, excuse me, it changed. We used to have a thousand families, Greek families in Somersworth back in the sixties. And then, the rest of the people in Somersworth were Irish. The Irish were the privilege in Somersworth. You probably either know or don't know, but the books are in the library, that back in its day, when the mills were running, the Irish were in charge of the mills. There are books that show our young teenage girls working in the mills because the wars were going on. And they did the work of what their mothers or fathers would do. Mothers were still working. So, it was a wonderful thing back then, and yet, those cultures, being at the establishment of Somersworth, it's changed. And so, to try to do something like the Holy Trinity Festival every fall as schools started, or the fireman's lawn park. You know, I mean, those things were part of our culture and our community. And until I draw my last death, Somersworth is it. I don't want to be like anyplace else. I want our kids to receive a good education, have good athletics, and whatever we can do to support that, we should. And I think we do. And I know everybody has a list, and I think we handle it pretty darn well. So, I thank everybody here tonight for that. And I'm sorry I got a little long-winded as well. But, you know, it's sentimental time. This coronavirus gives you time to think. There's no doubt about it. And how I handled that piece is I found out that I can get Duck Dynasty on TV. Now, I got to tell you, two episodes of Duck Dynasty a day keeps me smiling and giggling. And if you know the characters on Duck Dynasty, Si, the uncle, the old man, the army veteran, had written a book, so I bought it. The man is one of the most intellectual individuals that I ever read up on. But on TV, he's just, I mean, how can you not laugh at people that live in Monroe, Louisiana, in the swamps? And they like to go out gigging frogs, shooting ducks. Yeah, I mean, it just, so you sit there and you look at that family dynamic, and at the end of every day, every day, that family sits at the dining room table, thanks for what they got, and hope they can keep it. And it's a wonderful scene. It has a lot of meaning. I think there's a lot of families in Somersworth just like the people in Duck Dynasty. They're old. They've lived their lives, but they know how to raise a family and keep people happy. So, I thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Ward four counselor, Counselor Austin.
Someday, I'm going to have to move my seat because I never know how to follow Counselor Dumont's comments. But I'll give it a shot. I, obviously, I live in Ward four, so I had an opportunity to vote at Idlehurst School yesterday. It was a fabulous experience. I really enjoyed that. And I, you know, I walked away saying to myself, "I hope we can make this the permanent polling place for Ward four." It was remarkable. I mean, you don't worry about parking. It was plenty of space in the cafeteria. The flow was great. It just worked. It worked fine. So, I hope we can get some consideration to making that a permanent polling location in Ward four.
I'll let you know, counselor, not to interrupt you, I had a conversation with the superintendent today on moving in the direction to see if we could establish that for both places. He was open to that. So, it would take some work from Counselor with another communication, but...
That'd be great. Thanks. I'm looking forward to the goal-setting sessions that you talked about, mayor. I think that those are, you know, certainly, we have missed having those earlier when we would have normally had them. And I think there's, as a result of all of the things that have happened since March, I think there's a whole host of issues we would never thought to talk about in goal-setting sessions. And some of them we talked about tonight, and some of them we haven't. But I think those goal-setting sessions are going to be a lot more than which roads are we going to pave next year and those kinds of things. So, I'm looking forward to making those happen. I've been a little dismayed, not only in Somersworth, but, you know, you know, over there in the state and nationally, about just the way we treat each other these days. And we've all had our experiences. We also have seen examples of less-than-civil conversation, the more divisiveness and anger and things like that that you can have. It seems like that's the way to go. I mean, there's no, you think back to the day when Ronald Reagan was president and Tip O'Neill was Speaker of the House, and things got done. And there weren't two more polar opposite than those two people, but they got things done. That doesn't happen anymore. It doesn't happen in Washington. It doesn't always happen in Concord. It does happen here in Somersworth, and I'm proud to say that, and I'm proud to be a part of that. It happens here at the city level. It happens with the joint groups that we have with the school board. We truly are a different kind of governing organization here in this city. And I really wish that other communities and other levels of government would look to our model as a way to approach problems as opportunities, as ways to sit down at the same table and talk about things and not, you know, I mean, let's not go on Facebook. Let's not bombard the emails. Let's not, let's talk to each other face-to-face. Let's have a civil conversation, understand that we can disagree with each other sometimes, and walk away and still not feel like you got to go burn their house down because they disagreed with you. We've got to get back to that somehow. And I think what we have here in Somersworth is a unique model that allows that to happen. And I wish there was a way to export that to the rest of the country because I think it works here. I think it works very well. You know, people are people. And I've tried to live my whole life, you know, just with that mantra. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, you know, where you were born, or what color your skin is, or what your religion is. It doesn't matter. You're a person, you know? And I try to treat people as people. And I think if we all were able to engrain ourselves into that kind of philosophy, a lot of the issues we have today would go away, or at least be able to be talked about reasonably. So, I, again, like everybody else, I'm venting a little bit tonight. But I think that it's really important for us to recognize that working together is a lot better than working apart. And right now, the country's working apart. And I'm a little frustrated with that. But I do, I am proud to be a part of the Somersworth community because I think we figured it out here. Thank you.
Ward five counselor, Counselor Mishu.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the school department for allowing us to use this beautiful facility. I think it's great to see everybody all together again. And I'd like to thank the city clerk and his staff, and all the poll workers yesterday. I know it's not an easy job, long days, but thank you for your job yesterday. And Mr. Baker, I'd like to thank him for his continuing efforts in developing our downtown. It's deeply appreciated from me. On a sad note, I'd like to extend my sympathy to Mr. and Mrs. John Cummings of their daughter Cindy. A lot of you probably know Mr. Cummings as a math teacher and also baseball coach here at the high school. And Mrs. Cummings, she was a substitute teacher, and I had her plenty times during my four years at the high school. Their daughter Cindy, she was a year behind me in high school, but she was in my circle of friends. So, a few weeks back, when I saw her picture in the obituaries, really saddened me. So... Also, they were a member of Ward five for many, many years. So, that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Girding moves at the city council standard adjournment, seconded by Counselor Peppin. The question over the council is on adjournment. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nope. The ayes appear to have it. The ayes have it, and the city council is adjourned.